You're ready?
Yeah.
Good morning, everybody. It's November 17th, 2020, and 10:00 a.m., and I hereby call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. And we originate from the administrative building, Story County Public Access is being provided by Zoom. And that's, of course, because meeting in person is impossible on practical purpose, Section 21.8.1 because of COVID-19 pandemic. I have calls to order, and I would ask that anyone who's here to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty of justice for all. Okay, before we get into the agenda, I would just like to apologize to people whose items we deferred to this meeting from last meeting because we were running late and had a 10 o'clock. We have several items that are on this meeting, and I will do my best to keep us moving so that we don't have to do that again. Would appreciate everybody's patience with us, that we have to get through all these items, and also appreciate brevity as possible. So, adoption of the agenda. I would first want to say that at 10:30, we're going to do item 16... No, that's not it. Excuse me. Yeah, 16.7, which is regarding Story County Public Health and Temporary Housing Fund, COVID-19. And that's because last week, our Public Health Director can be available between a 10:00 meeting and 11:00 meeting. So we will move that up. But with that note, we may also move up the R E G... R D G, excuse me. R D G, Planning and Design, to new because they will need to leave at 12:30, but hopefully we will get done by then. So those are just timed things. So with those considerations, I'd appreciate a motion for approval of the agenda. So move. Simmons?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is adopted. And we will go on updates, COVID-19 staff. Are there any updates that you would like to give us? No? Okay. Supervisors, Supervisor, Headens, do you have...
I do. It looks like right now statewide, there are 3,563 new cases and 33 deaths statewide. Story County has 98 new cases and one additional death, so we're up to 19.
That's all in a day?
That's in a day. 24 hours.
Okay. And we also listened, I think all of us last night or many of us, to the Governor's New Proclamation requiring face coverings under some circumstances. I would point out, just not go as far as several other ones, and particularly, just go as far as our counties. But I would urge everybody, as you're planning for the holidays, please take this seriously. We've been looking at these numbers and how often they are virtually doubling. And it's all up to us individually and collectively to protect ourselves and each other. Supervisor Olson, did you have anything you wanted to say on COVID?
Nothing, thank you.
We'll go on to number seven, public comment. Number one, this comment period is for public to address topics on today's agenda. I will open the public comment period, and if you have anything to say, please unmute yourself or raise your hand through Zoom or use star nine, whatever works. Seeing nobody, I will close public comment number one, and we'll go on to discussion and consideration of items brought with Board of Request for Immediate Action. Do we have any? Hearing none. I will go on for item nine, discussion and direction regarding lease renewal with Mary Greeley Medical Center for January 1, 2021. Carla Webb, good morning, Carla.
Good morning, Board. So we're here to talk about the CSTLC lease renewal. As I indicated in my memo, we're looking to seek direction from the Board regarding the renewal of the lease with Mary Greeley Medical Center for the 124 South Hazel Address. Currently, the lease is a dollar per term and expires on 12/31/20. CICS and Mary Greeley have been working towards the possible development of subacute services at the current location, and Mary Greeley Medical Center staff is proposing to discontinue the crisis stabilization services that they're currently doing there. They would look to implement the subacute service and continue the transitional living center services. It is anticipated that the subacute services would be more readily utilized than the crisis stabilization services are, which that then offers Mary Greeley to bring in more Medicaid funding. The subacute... Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm not sure what that was.
Okay. The subacute services are very similar to the transitional living center services. While the subacute is Medicaid-funded, the transitional living center services are regionally funded. It is possible that the subacute services could be accessed by other residents of neighboring mental health disability services regions. As we were working with Kristi at Mary Greeley on the subacute services, we did discuss a potential cost in the future of rent for the current facility, and I worked with Joby at the time to obtain an estimated rent amount of $5,030 per month. My understanding is, once rent is charged, then property taxes also would need to be paid. The change to offer subacute services will be going before the Mary Greeley Board, I believe, on November 23rd. If the Board approves, if Mary Greeley approves going forward, then CICS and Mary Greeley would need to complete a contract amendment for the subacute services and also potentially negotiate a new TLC rate. I have been speaking with Joby and Ethan regarding the lease renewal. What we need is a direction from the Board regarding whether or not the Board would like staff to begin the process to determine a proposed rent amount for the lease renewal for January 21 or for a future lease renewal. As the building was remodeled a couple of years ago, my understanding is an updated assessment is needed, and the use of the property and the lease would also need amended. My suggestion at this time would be for the Board to direct staff to complete the process to determine a recommended rental rate for either the January 21 renewal or July 21 renewal. The July renewal, if it was implemented in July, that would offer staff more time to work on obtaining this information and also Mary Greeley additional time to work through the transition of service should they decide to implement subacute. However, if the Board did decide to begin charging rent this January, then CICS would also work with Mary Greeley regarding funding and the increased cost. I believe Kristi Kraus and Gary Botin were looking to join the meeting. I'm not sure if they have gotten on yet. And then also Russell Wood and possibly Patty Tribble leads with CICS were joining. So hopefully, they are on in case you have questions that I'm not able to answer. But I'll turn it over to you to start the discussion.
Jan, can you expand the tiles on the top so we can see who else is on?
Gary Botin on.
Russell is on.
I have a question for Kristi.
Okay, let's just...
I have some questions as well, but I was sure.
Okay, doesn't look like anybody else is on from CICS or Mary Greeley right now.
Oh, Russell's on from CICS.
Russell's on.
This is Kristi. This is Kristi. We've had trouble. Gary's not able to get on, and I had trouble, and so I just jumped on via phone.
Sorry to hear that. That would be... Okay. So we have somebody from Mary Greeley and CICS as well as Carla. So, good. Let's... Supervisor Olson said she has a question for Carla, so maybe we should start with that.
Yes. My question is regards the loss of the crisis services. This whole proposal, when it was put together, the remodel of the building, you know, the $1, everything that the Board of Supervisors has done was related to both of those services being involved. I've not followed as closely how services have moved the last couple of years. Could somebody bring me up to date about why we don't need the crisis services anymore? And then my second follow-up question would be, shifting to this new priority or plan, would there need to be another building remodel? Those are my two questions.
Sure, you bet. I will work to answer those, and I'll let Kristi also share some information too, if she would like. We have found that the crisis stabilization service is not being heavily utilized. The last information I had when we looked at this in July was one to three individuals per month were utilizing crisis stabilization. And I think there have been some issues with reimbursement from Medicaid for that service. Statewide, my understanding is that service is not as heavily utilized as we had hoped. We would still have access to that service, though, in regions surrounding us. There is crisis stabilization at Woodward, and then also in Waterloo, and then in some neighboring areas around us. So that service is still available. It just would not be right now available within our region.
Kristi? Because that was a real big push at the time, was to make crisis services available here for both adults and youth, okay, in our region.
Yep, and we went in with that intent for that. Crisis stabilization residential, it can only be used as a hospital diversion, and it's for up to five days, whereas subacute can be used as a diversion and a step-down in up to 10 days. We do see probably higher utilization of the subacute, most certainly than we have seen for the crisis stabilization.
I think that's a good explanation.
This is Kristi, and I would just echo everything Carla is saying, and to know that we could still put persons in crisis in the subacute bed because we can do it as a diversion for hospitalization, which is the original intent of crisis. So we still could provide that level of care. It would just be within the subacute realm of service. Hopefully, that makes sense.
Does. Thank you for that. That helps me understand for some of today's... And will there need to be remodeling of the facility?
No, I don't believe so at this time.
Thank you. I'm done.
I have to have a couple of questions. I had a conversation with Gary Botin, and he had some concerns with the increase in rent by January 1. An email that I had said an increase in rent would put them over at $100,000 here, $100,000 in losses, and was looking at maybe kind of ramping up potentially if we're going to do rent, but also recognizing that, at least for my colleagues here, that then property tax enters in. And so I'm just wondering where he is at and what concerns he has or still has or doesn't have related to this situation and the losses that Mary Greeley would take. Because I do know that they also pull a lot towards the medications as well.
Kristi, are you able to respond to Lisa's question?
Yes, and Gary's now on the line, I believe, also. Yes, we were looking at a loss of $41,000 on the medication that we've been subsidizing. With the program expansion, we also believe that we... One of the regulations for the crisis beds was that we had to leave those two beds open at all times. So we're not going to have to do that if we switch to subacute. So we believe that our average daily census will increase. Once we increase beyond six clients there to fill the full eight beds, we're going to need to add additional staffing to about a cost of $100,000. Then by the time we add in the potential rent of approximately $67,000, I believe, it does put a pretty cost-heavy burden on the daily rate for the program.
Yeah, Kristi, this is Gary. I'm here now. Sorry I was late.
So Gary, my... I was just... This is Lisa. I was just asking in relation to the mail that you and I had some conversation and correspondence on the potential losses, and I know you had a suggestion of kind of ramping up, that we were going to institute rent beyond the dollar. I think you had kind of a suggestion of a 36-month ramp up. Recognize, though, whenever we... If we, or whenever we decide to do more increased rent, we'll then put into play property taxes. I was just trying to figure out a little bit more of the impact to the hospital and where you were at on that.
Yeah, yeah, Lisa. So thanks for that. Yeah, what we were thinking, you know, as Kristi just described, if we can change those crisis beds to subacute, and then we have to ramp up staffing, it's going to take us some period of time, and it's hard to forecast, to when we can really be utilizing that facility to its maximum potential. And so, you know, what I was suggesting to you is, I've looked at what was proposed, and this is on a document that Kristi had provided us previously. The monthly rate that I think the county was looking at is $5,600 a month, and that, based on the square footage of that facility, comes out to $13.62 a foot, which in and of itself is not out of market. So I'm not really contesting the rate that's being proposed. But what I was suggesting is, could we ramp it up over maybe a two-year or three-year period while we get these changes in place and the additional staffing to fully utilize that facility?
Gary, this is London Merkin. The other thing that I would see, though, is kind of a chicken-and-egg thing here. In order to set your rate, you need to know what we're going to charge you. But in order to know what you can afford, you need to know what kind of income you're going to be bringing in with the new service. So I think that's the thing. When will you be negotiating the rates?
Kristi, is that something you can answer?
So that... I can share a little bit there. So the subacute rate is a Medicaid rate, and that's established at $400 per day. Where I think CICS and Mary Greeley would need to negotiate would be on the crisis stabilization, or not crisis stabilization, the transitional living center rate. We may need to negotiate on that, depending on the change in the cost for the services there.
I have a clarification question, if I could.
Russell, go ahead.
So the comment about ramping up was that we would need two to three years to ramp up this facility. That is not at all the intention of CICS. The intention of CICS is that this facility would be functional in July, not two to three years from now. So I guess I'm a little taken back by that comment that they would need to ramp up rent over two to three years so that they would be completely functional. As Carla had brought up earlier, there are other regions around us that are interested in utilizing beds if we have capacity for them to utilize. And I do believe that part of the issue, as Kristi had raised, is that we were requiring two of those beds to stay available for crisis stabilization. At this point in time, having the capacity for eight people is something that I think is not going to meet the needs of everybody. I think it's going to be pretty utilized, and I would hate to believe that our target timeframe is two to three years.
I do think, though, Russell, there will be a ramp-up period because, first of all, we've got to add 2.1 FTEs to the program. So finding people who are medication aid certified and meet the level of staffing need we have there is going to take us some time. The other thing is, we have to get the facility licensed through DIA for subacute and the Medicaid reimbursement. And I know we're still in negotiation phase, and we don't have a contract that, you know, the region... And I assume you guys have verbally given support to funding until we're able to achieve that licensure as a subacute. So there is going to be a period of us needing to ramp that program up.
Kristi, this is London Merkin. How long do you think those two things will take you to do realistically?
Well, our staffing has been a little bit of a challenge. To fill a current open position is taking us anywhere from three to nine months. So that's just kind of a general figure there. The licensure piece could take us anywhere from six to 12 months.
So let's say six months. This is just, I mean, we're thinking about possible direction. You know, what if it were a six-month, go with, rather than January 1, go with July 1 of '21, and then do some, start there, but do some pro-rating of the rent for a couple of years through that? Is that the kind of direction you're looking for, Carla? And I don't know how the other supervisors feel about it. I'm just bringing that up to get us started.
You bet. Yeah, I mean, if we look at July 1 with the rental rate starting, that gives us time to determine, get the updated appraisal or assessment done that's needed and that. And then I guess I would probably have to defer to Ethan and Joby on how does that work if the property taxes, if we have to start paying on those as soon as rent is charged? So I'm not real sure how that ramp, how well that ramp up could work, but that's something that perhaps staff could take a look at.
I assume that when we start getting any rent, charging any rent, that all the property taxes are due, they're not pro-rated. So we'd at least have to make sure we were getting our property taxes covered.
I have a question now, because we're giving the dollar right now, and we're not paying them.
That's nonsense. It does answer your dollar.
So, yeah, so I guess where is... My question would be, maybe I see the assessors on the line with us, our treasurers on the line, looking for some guidance. I don't know. I didn't see Joby on the line, but looking for guidance here about how the rent's tied in to these, to the property tax. Because I'm not interested in charging anything more than property tax, but getting back what we have to pay out, certainly not at the beginning. The whole concept behind this was that, since Story County couldn't put actual money into this, is that our, it wasn't, if you will, an in-kind?
Maybe, I'm just looking at the clock. We're getting close to 10:25, and we should wrap this up in five minutes because Les will be joining us. Maybe that's something that we, that's just direction for Carla and Joby and Ethan to look into and to let us know when the property, how much the property taxes are, when they would come into play. And that would be quite a... But is general...
I think you also need to know, too, is we've got an estimate of what rate, what the rent would be based on what property taxes are, but we don't know if the building hasn't been reassessed since the...
Right, and Carla said they would, that would give us time to get it assessed. So Carla, is that a sufficient direction to you to look at July 1 as an earliest possible date? So we would simply be re-extending this lease through July 1 at the dollar, and then you would come back to us in a couple of months, maybe, with some more, with some answers to these questions and a recommendation?
Yeah, so that'll work. We can look to get the lease drafted for the renewal at a dollar. The other thing that would need to change is the use of the property because it does specify the crisis stabilization transitional living center. So that would need to be amended or updated as well, and I can work with Ethan on that.
I think for me, that would make some sense because I feel like I need a little bit more information before we can make any final determination on rent or staying at that dollar because we don't know, we don't have final...
We're just going to ask for direction now, and I think, I think it's been a good discussion. I think we've given sufficient direction. Jan? Okay.
Yep.
Anything on Carla?
Thank you.
Anybody on the phone for this? Russell, Kristi, Gary? Thanks, everybody, for joining.
Thank you.
Les, what are you on the phone yet? And if Les is not, I'm going to go on and take us to... I'm going to... The RISE grant's going to take more time, so we're going to wait on that. I'm going to go on to agency reports. We have none. Item 12, consideration of minutes, November 10 minutes. I would entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. 11, 10 minutes are adopted. Next personnel action, we could entertain a motion for approval as listed.
So move. Second.
Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Adopted. Next, we'll go to 14, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda to be pulled?
No.
No.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion for approval if the consent agenda is presented.
So move. Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. I don't see Les yet. Let's see if we've got something else we can do really quickly. We may not. We've got public hearing items, additional items, want to keep us going. So I'm going to ask if we look at item 16.1. I put it on the agenda, and let me state what. There were some emails, and I have to... And I was just a little concerned or confused about the plan, and we have a plan tomorrow night. We're going to have the public hearing for the ordinance number 287, the private sewage disposal systems, and that's going to be at 6:30 tomorrow night, originating from here, but on Zoom. I got some, I saw some questions in email, are we still wanting to continue that? And I had a suggestion made to me, which was, it does require three hearings unless the third is waived. This ordinance has been presented to us quite some time ago, and it seems like it makes sense to get started. I know that everybody might not be able to get on by Zoom, but if we do the first hearing by Zoom, perhaps we can hold off a while on the second one and wait and see if we could have an in-person hearing for people who can't Zoom in. If that's, you know, and we all know, the pandemic, we're not charged, you know? The virus is in control. We don't know when it's going to be safe to have an in-person meeting. It's not now, but we've been putting this off for months and months. So I just wanted to make sure that we were okay with the plan we have now.
Is there a timeframe between the first hearing and the second?
I don't think so. I asked Ethan the other day. He said no. I see Shelley shaking her head back and forth, no. So there is not. If there were, that would be a concern. So that's a very good question, but no, I, there is none defined.
And would that confuse people if you have a hearing now, the first one, and then wait six or eight months for a second one?
I don't know. I don't know.
Plus, most likely, anybody who appears at the first one is going to reappear at the second one if you wait that long.
And that could be. We could ask people to, if they've already, if they've already sent in emails, because we've got it on our website. We have, we got an informational article in the Instridian. That was a good, was, Margaret, you did a good job with that with the reporter. Thank you for doing that. We've, you know, I think people are aware, yes, we would explain this is the second, but, you know, we can't make the, we can't make it so there's not a pandemic. We can't make it so it's safe to have an in-person meeting right now. We did a KFO application on Zoom, it was one of our first public meetings on Zoom, that went fairly well, and, you know, we can strive... And, you know, we can strive the best we can to give a public, you know, to give a whole bunch of different ways for the public to have input, but we're right now constrained by pandemic.
So I just asked the question because it was referred to us uh from a Facebook page that I don't follow, uh, but that someone had sent out a post saying, contact each one of these supervisors, this should be in person, okay? So which obviously led me to say, to just ask, what is, is there anything around our timeframe itself that we can respond to people about? I mean, that's really what my question was. And so it's great that we're clarifying what my question was. I wasn't advocating for postponement or any change of the schedule whatsoever. This has been a long time in the making. It has been on the Board of Health agenda before, okay, in discussions. There was a work group that was brought in. There were plumbers and septic installers, I mean, you know, yeah, so, so there's been plenty of outlook there. It's just that sometimes things take on from social media alike, okay? So all I was asking is about, you know, I know how to respond about technology, anything else, just timing. I don't have any problem with the timing. The one thing I would point out here is that um, are we not set up right now to have it done by the end of the year? If we went, we've got the hearing on Wednesday and then Margaret, you're bringing it back the next two uh Tuesdays, correct? You're on mute, Margaret.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, um, that, that's what I prefer to do. But um, open, open to suggestions.
My suggestion is, is that you're changing a supervisor here at the board, okay? So if you want to go ahead and stretch it out for months and months and months, I guess it's published on the first one, but make sure Latif is here, right? So that if you're gonna stretch it out over the, to next year, that the people are communicating with the supervisor who'll make the vote, all right? If you wanna go ahead and follow Margaret's schedule, which I don't think there's anything wrong with, then it'll be me casting a vote. That's really the only thing here. But I, I mean, this has been a long time in the works here. And I never heard from one single person. I didn't get one phone call, one email. So that post apparently didn't urge anybody to pick up a phone.
I've heard from a couple of people about, on the issue in general, but not specifically about the hearing.
Okay, thanks. I prefer people on the issue, but not from the hearing itself.
All we need to do right now is decide if we wanna make a motion to change what we're doing tomorrow and we're all set. So we, we can decide next week when we have the second and third.
Yeah.
Meetings.
Okay. But anyway, so we're good for Wednesday.
Are there any, does anybody have a motion?
She usually adds it to the ordinance of the dates we can have the meetings.
And it's not on the ordinance?
It's not on the ordinance.
So.
So that she can have the dates to the.
Margaret, can you hear what Shelley's saying?
No.
He said the ordinance, you have the dates of the second and the third meetings. And they're not on it right now, correct?
That's correct, because I didn't, I was waiting for today's decision. If you come up with one, otherwise I will leave it blank and, and fill it in as they go.
Well, I just have the second consideration for the 24th at 10:00 AM.
Yeah.
And the third and final consideration for December 1st at 10:00 AM.
November 24th and December 1st.
At 10:00 AM.
Both at 10:00 AM. So should we just have Margaret, give Margaret direction to put those in now and if we, we change it, we change it?
Yes.
Okay. You got that, Margaret?
I was having trouble hearing, I apologize.
Discussion, November 24th at 10:00 AM. Third consideration, December 1st at 10:00 AM. We'll see if we get any feedback.
Okay, I'll do that.
It's Les White on yet? Thank you, Margaret. Is Les White on the phone yet?
I'm here.
Les, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
We're now going to then um 16 additional items and it's item Roman numeral seven, discussion and consideration for requests for Story County Public Health for COVID-19 or the temporary housing funding. And I understand you might have somewhat of a different idea.
Yes, so um at this point in time, um, just on Friday, I became aware of some additional funding that Public Health will be receiving from the state. So at this point in time, um, we, Public Health, Story County Public Health, will take care of that alternative site um for the homeless, um, with a contract with Microtel. So I will not be asking for any additional funding from the Board of Supervisors at this time.
And Les, since there was an email inquiry just a few minutes before we began our meeting, um, that uh there, if, because of how this funding availability is, has to be used by December 30th, that if there are some additional charges related to daily expenses, meals, et cetera, to house somebody, you'll just come back to the Board of Supervisors at that time, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Um, because I don't know, um, the funding that I received um just over the weekend will need to be used by December 30th. And so at the end of December 30th, then I don't know what additional funding that will be made available. So yes, I may have to come back to the Board of Supervisors to ask. And what that would be for is basically the case management piece of these individuals um that we place at the Microtel.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, if we have questions about that, we can ask them if you come back wanting.
Yes.
Super. Um, I know you have another meeting to get to, so I, if there's no other questions, we'll, we'll just let that go and we'll, we'll consider your request withdrawn.
I would just like to thank Les and her staff, okay, for making those inquiries and working and, and thank you to Microtel, too. But thank you, because I know you guys were on the phone a lot to try and find somebody who could accommodate us. Thanks.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take just about a 60-second break here with technical issues. My, and in the meantime, um, just to let you know, Darren Moon, Jordan Cook, and John Hall, you're next, but if you wait till a supervisor heads this, gets back to the computer, we'll have you go down. Okay?
Are we gonna do the public hearing again?
Pardon?
Are we gonna do the public hearing again?
Your pu, your public hearing? We will do it.
Right after RISE.
Right, right after RISE. It's next up, because it's after consent.
Sorry, I thought you meant.
It has been kind of a bounce around day. Sorry about that.
Trying to make sure I'm straight.
For whatever reason, it's opening up Story Desk that I can't pull any documents. Okay, we're ready to go. Item 10 here, discussion for applying for a RISE grant with the City of Nevada to partially fund the paving of 1 Mile on 220th Street east of 580th Avenue. We have county engineer Darren Moon, we have Nevada city administrator Jordan Cook, and there's John Hall of Ames Chamber Economic Development, Nevada Economic Development. Who all you're with us these days, John? I'm not sure. So, good morning, gentlemen.
Who's gonna start?
This is Darren. I will start with a little quick background information. Um, I will attempt to share my screen here first. Uh, the stretch of road we're talking about will be this mile right here, if you can see my cursor, 220th Street, this first mile, the east of 580th Avenue. Now, just to give you a little history on 220th, we did have a bonding project scheduled for these two miles right here to pave those two miles. Uh, as you know, we ran into some right-of-way negotiation issues, so that was kind of put on hold for a while. While we were on hold, we investigated a few other things. One was this railroad crossing here on 580th. That was, in my mind, kind of the impetus of why we added this on for paving. If this railroad crossing was closed in the future, 220th would get a lot more traffic. I have not uh heard any more information that there is plans to close that. Um, so the other issue is over here on 600th Avenue, we had somewhat of an informal agreement that we would include this half a mile of the city of Nevada's uh portion of 220th in our bond project if they would go ahead and pave this half a mile of 600th Street here. Uh, that is currently not in the city's plans, um, so um, that's one other issue we're looking at. Um, let me pull up another slide. We did get a little bit of new information here just yesterday. The DOT finally updated their traffic counts. These are their 2019 counts. They count our gravel roads every four years. I just wanted to point out, this is the first mile, 250 vehicles a day. That did not change from the 2015 counts. It stayed at 250 vehicles a day. Uh, the second mile did drop from 180 down to 140, so we actually saw a decrease in traffic on this second mile.
Second mile, you're talking about the mile to the east?
Correct.
Drop from 180 to what?
140.
Okay.
And when was the last time that was taken again, Darren?
These are the 2019 counts, so it was uh probably in the fall of 2019 and those usually come out in the spring of 2020, but I believe it was COVID that slowed the processing down, so we just got those numbers out. And typically, uh, we, we look at paving a road when we kind of reach the 300 to 400 vehicles a day is when we really have a tough time maintaining a gravel road. Um, so that first mile at 250, that's, that's starting to reach that level and if we find a little more information today, I think John might be able to talk a little bit what the traffic impacts might be of this new development. Um, might bump that number up enough uh to where we would uh need to pave that. Uh, my last screen here kind of shows you, the city limits are grayed out. 590th is in, right in the middle and that's where the City of Ames and the City of Nevada abut on 590. Um, can you see my cursor?
Yes, yes.
This is the property, this is the property right here that we're talk, the City of Nevada is talking about annexing and this is where the Verbio, I believe it's a rail yard expansion, but again, John can talk about that a little bit more. This is where that would go on this almost half a mile stretch of that.
Darren. Darren.
Yes.
We're still looking for the first document. Are you trying to just scan another one?
Okay, just a minute, let me double check that.
While you're doing that, is there anybody from Verbio, Rebio?
Verbio.
Verbio?
On the call?
Yes, is there anyone on the call?
I don't think so, but John might be.
No, Verbio is not on the call.
All right, thank you.
Perhaps Jordan or John could ask, answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm gonna hold until Darren's done with his presentation. I just wanted to know if we're gonna get it from the horse's mouth, no offense, from the person's mouth.
Just one second here. Sorry about that, it's got closed for somebody. Can you see that now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, if you can see my cursor, this uh area right here is the area we're talking about, the City of Nevada annexing. And so this first mile here is what is proposed to be submitted for a RISE project to pave it out to 590th. Also point out, probably discuss this at the end, but 590th, the north-south road right here is currently a, it's a dead end, Level B maintenance road for Story County. If Nevada annexes this piece, they'll take half of that. Um, there's some talk about upgrading that road as well. The county does not currently have a policy to upgrade a Level B road. We've never done that before. I think my suggestion would be, since we have all landowners on both sides, they're all the same landowner, we could propose just to vacate it as a county road and then the developers or the city could do whatever they wanted with it at that point.
Darren, this is Larissa, and I just have a question about what I'm looking at here. I see your cursor, I believe, it's, and of the land has been annexed and then there's a strip of lighter before you, uh, before you get to 220th, is that the right-of-way?
Oh, right there. I am not sure what, I think that's just coloration issue.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I was understanding what exactly was coming in and not.
And you're saying that Verbio owns the probably quarter-mile section to the east of 590th?
Yes, yes, they currently own that and the city is planning on annexing or just waiting for Ames to make a decision on that.
I said to the east, not the west.
Oh, yeah, to the west is Verbio.
Yeah, to clarify, to the east is still owned by the Dowell Sisters property, um, but all of the property, uh, going back to the east until you hit city limits, that additional grayed-out box is all controlled and owned by the Dowell Sisters Farm LLC.
Darren, could you take your cursor and just move from west to east for what John is saying is owned by the Dowells?
Here.
Okay, so that.
So they have access off 220th, so vacating, well, it's gray B or Level B anyway, but vacating the Level B section of 590th, there would not be a problem in terms of them?
Yeah, it wouldn't land-lock any property, um, except for this chunk down here that's owned by the railroad and that would be, that's included in the annexation for Nevada. That's kind of how they um get across to this piece is by annexing this strip of railroad property. But I'm assuming the railroad doesn't need to get access to that because they have access through the railroad.
Well, this is a flag, isn't that what this called, a flag, kind of flag stamp annexation? Is they're going right along there on, on the railroad, then they're not bringing in the Dowells property?
In a way, it's a flag, but they do have the south portion already, so that it's really just kitty-corner from this, but um the railroad kind of is the divider, so they had to take the piece on the top to get, you have to have a little stretch uh adjacent to it to, in order to annex it.
Okay, the um consequence then of Nevada annexation is that they will be annexing down the middle of the road, so basically about 25% of 220th will be Nevada's, right?
That's correct. Whereas over here, Nevada annexed the entire roadway, so it's 100% Nevada here and north-south. Where here, they just take half, so it would be, yes, a quarter of that first mile. A couple of quick more things before, a couple of questions of John. The cost estimate for the first mile of paving here, um, originally I'd said it was 1.2. We looked at that again, we really didn't include a little inflation and contingencies, so technically I want to say that's probably 1.35 million now is our budget estimate. Uh, that includes a, about a $300,000 drainage structure right here. There's, there's a bridge and a box cover that need to be replaced if we pave this, so that's why that first mile's considerably more than the second mile. why that first mile's considerably more than the second mile. The second mile would probably be about 900,000. I believe that's it. My main questions for John would be the traffic impacts to this road. If this were developed, would it be trucks, cars, and how much? And then I talked with the DOT about what the possibility of getting accepted for this RISE grant would be, and that was one of their questions. The other question was, the jobs are mainly created at the existing plant down here, south of the railroad, which doesn't have access through the railroad right here. That's a dead end. So we'd have to somehow tie these jobs that were created down here to the piece we're paving up here, so John might be able to speak to that a little bit more, but those are my two main questions right now.
Well, thanks, Darren. Good morning, supervisors. To speak directly to a couple of those pieces before broader, broadly touching on a couple of additional items. I don't have the exact traffic counts right now, but it would primarily be tanker truck traffic at this stage, so it would be a heavy amount of tanker trucks filled with ethanol at this stage, and they would also likely do some level of stover storage on site with the existing land out there. So the land given, the land that they're looking at using out there, while it would have the rail yard, would also have a storage tank for ethanol for offloading, a couple of other smaller facilities, and maybe Jordan has seen the site planning and could speak more thoroughly to it, but it also offers them expansion opportunities out there. So while their initial plans out there don't have a whole lot of immediate job creation on site at that facility, the potential out there will continue to grow. That being said, our ability to tie it to the jobs down at the facility on the south side of the tracks is obviously going to be our biggest challenge. It's a narrative question through the DOT. I feel confident that, given the position that Verbio is in, their growth as a facility and the immediate economic impact or impact to their facility, that having this access to this land to the north has, that we can make a strong narrative case that the jobs on this site are directly tied to their ability to access and utilize this land for both offloading of the ethanol product, but then also potentially the storage of the stover that feeds their facility in Phase 1. So there is a narrative component to it, and certainly, as you all are well aware, any public process, I mean, this will go to the DOT's public commission, any public process has to stand up to that scrutiny, and certainly, that'll be part of our obligation with an application. So how we kind of arrived at this point is that Verbio is now looking at doing an expansion on their initial facility, so the tanks that are almost up are for their renewable natural gas products, corn stover and converting it into natural gas. And their second phase is going to be a second-generation ethanol facility, so this is not a cellulosic ethanol facility, but it is using regular corn, but using it at about half of the energy consumption of traditional ethanol production facilities. And so their need to ship that is built on access to rail. They see a need for a rail yard and the facilities to manage that, and that's really the goal of this annexation and ultimately of this development. So how we came forward with the RISE grant is obviously their need to access back into here. Because the road is what it is, they could continue to have access to it, but it was really a conversation built on, the board supervisors I knew had had a plan to deploy a paved road two miles further along. Obviously, that was kind of put on hold, but the opportunity to take advantage of additional public dollars that are available for incenting projects was one that I thought it was worth reintroducing to the board to say, okay, if, I understand right now, maybe things are getting pulled back on that, it's getting put on hold, but if at any point in the next 20 to 30 years that this is going to be a priority project and paving back towards Nevada off of 220th, off of 13th Street and the exit to the interstate, is ever going to be a priority in the next 20 to 30 years, now is the time to take advantage of that because the 56 additional jobs that they've got yet to create at Verbio could equate up to, and I say up to, $728,000 in RISE dollars. So the opportunity to access nearly three-quarters of a million dollars is not something that we routinely see. So that was really the impetus for coming back forward in front of you and asking about the application to the RISE grant. As I understand, Darren has some concerns about the actual application process, both from his experience or, you know, having not done one of these before, but then also the staffing concerns for making the application. Certainly, I'm happy to help on the narrative component and some of those pieces, but there's some highly technical things that are asked for in the application, and that's just outside my wheelhouse.
I have some questions for the other supervisors of questions first.
Okay, yes, I do, but I'm going to start with a statement. I have been adamant the last two years here that with the changes, we had a flip over the board, that this was a high priority project, and I think you know how disappointed I was to hear that we had dropped the ball on going forward on the right-of-way and that the decision had been made, not unilaterally from this board. So we've got to pave these two miles, whether or not Nevada comes forward with that other half mile, okay? It's in their interest to do it, but life will go on if that half mile doesn't get paved right of-way. We've got to pave them. So for me, this question boils down to whether we go ahead and try to get some RISE money and take the risk of then having to pay it back if those jobs aren't created, or do we just do it like we're planning to do it in the first three, and it'll be your guys' call on that. But I think this is a high priority paving project to get done. I know that the county engineer is not, it doesn't meet a lot of the matrix that he wants to check off, like how many road travel, counter, whatever, but we know what's happening to Highway 30 up south.
Let's do questions first.
All right, so my question is, John, how far are we on this Verbio? Because this is the first thing that this supervisor has heard about Verbio and growth plans. I know, if I understand this correctly, you talked to Supervisor Burke and she sent you to Darren, but how firm are we on these plans, and how come Verbio hasn't told us about it and it's our role?
Well, I believe Darren has had a conversation with Verbio, if I'm not mistaken, and their engineers have reached out.
A consulting firm just called and asked that they heard we were doing a RISE project. That's really the extent of the discussion. They were asking me for information, and I had none at that point.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Thanks for clarifying that. Let's come back to how come Verbio hasn't really truly reached out to the supervisors, John?
I would say it's because they're trying to figure out how this process needed to start. So the conversation started with me and with Jordan, and then ultimately brought it to you all, and that's when I got deferred to start the conversation with Darren. They haven't put forth a formal application other than to begin the annexation process, and when they began that annexation process, and Jordan can jump in here too, I believe the conversation circled back with the city as their impression was that that was then the local governing body that they would deal with for issues and challenges with the site, for the site planning process and those sorts of things. So I don't think it's because they're not interested in engaging in a public conversation or talking about it. I think it was more of a, hey, where do we go here? Where do we start? How do we kind of navigate this? And firming up their plans so that when they did come forward, that they were at least fairly firm on where they would be.
I have some factual questions.
Okay, so my next question has to do with, I mean, I have the notice of annexation hearing right here. I brought the papers, okay? So why is it that Nevada's not doing this? All right, why instead of Nevada, Nevada's annexing, and clearly Verbio and Nevada have a relationship.
Well, so, and I'll let Jordan kind of speak to it, but my understanding is, the city of Nevada would only have control of 22 miles, so 22% of the road, it's a little less than a quarter or a little less than half a mile on just one side of the road. And given that you guys had been looking at this paving project, it seemed to fit that the RISE grant would make the most sense to come before the board of supervisors. And so that was the reason that I brought this conversation to you all.
Thanks. I'm going to pass now to my colleagues.
Darren, here is, well, the ethanol plant. I went to, I have not toured Verbio before. I didn't know what all they did, so I went to their website, and the website, trying to figure out exactly what the travel, what the road traffic was going to be and where it was going to be from. So my understanding right now is what they're doing is natural gas and the cellulose fiber, and that's got a pipeline for distribution. So the second facility, this new ethanol facility or process, where is that going to be on this map that Darren's got in front of us?
So that actual process will take place on the existing Verbio site. There's a number of pieces of equipment that were left over from the DuPont cellulosic ethanol production facility that will be retooled and repurposed, and they'll be bringing in some additional equipment in order to actually make that work, but that'll be on the existing Verbio site.
So the paving to 20th, what that's seen as, you said there was going to be a storage tank for ethanol. Is that going to be on the new land they're buying north of the tracks?
Yeah, I assume they'll have storage tanks on both sides, but they'll need one on the north side so that they can offload the tanker trucks and then prepare to load up the tanker rail cars with ethanol shipping out.
And the actual loading onto the rail cars will be done on the north side of the railroad at their new site?
Correct.
How do they get there?
So, yeah, so.
The plans that they show have the railroad coming in from the west and looping around on the land on the north side, loops around back onto the railroad heading east.
That's not quite right. What I'm asking is if they're producing the ethanol south of the tracks, how do they get it to the north of the tracks?
Yeah, so they'll exit their drive on what would be 590th Potter Ave, city of Ames, city of Nevada borderline, and then head west on Lincoln Highway, north on Teller Ave or 580th, and cross the rail tracks that way, and then come back on 220th to the east. So they have to make that loop in order to access that facility because there's not a crossing at 590th. There's a heavy amount of rail traffic that currently exists there, so there is no crossing there, but that would be the loop that they would make in order to bring the trucks around.
If 580th got closed the tracks, would they do them?
We'd have to, I mean, that would be a conversation that they would have to engage in. It would likely be coming from the other direction.
When we originally were talking, or the previous board was originally talking about paving to 20th, it was because of this overriding concern that 580th was going to be closed of the tracks.
That was one of them, yeah.
That's why I'm bringing it up. I, whose decision is it whether 580th is closed of the tracks?
I would, go ahead, ma'am.
City of Ames says annex the tracks, so it would be a city of Ames decision.
When we started talking about it, Ames had not annexed over, correct, Darren?
That I do not recall when, the timing of all that.
Just about when I came on, four years ago? I can't remember if it was before or after, but right around there, but yeah.
Okay. So all of the traffic that will go on to 220th, on to this new Verbio, this rail offloading site or onloading site, will be the ethanol?
I, oh, sorry.
They use it for stover storage, right?
Right, yep.
When are they going to be, when are they going to start the ethanol facility in operation?
In operation is likely 2022 with a full buildout. Jordan, you might be able to speak to timing on site planning for everything?
Site planning, they have captured that land, so they do technically own it now. I believe they wanted to wait until it was actually in the city's, their land in the city limits, and that's when they're going to start doing everything. But I know that they have a relatively fast timeline, and they have a lot of things that they have in plans for the next three years. So that, I know that they're wanting to move quite fast and get the process going, so as of right now, they're waiting on Ames and city of Nevada to move forward.
And those are public hearings, Ames 8th of December and Nevada 14th of December, correct?
Correct, yep.
If Ames, and I don't know, I've not been privy to the, you know, this annexation. It was news to me when it came in. If Ames, and I don't know, is Ames likely to say no? Could Ames say no, and then what would happen with the plan?
So Ames could say no. They've, there's been at least one council member who's publicly expressed that he is not in favor of moving forward with it at this time, wanting to understand what the cost of deployment of infrastructure would be before making that decision. But the remainder of the council voted to move the issue forward. I mean, I could speculate about what would happen or if this didn't happen or any of those pieces, but until we get through those public hearings, we won't know. Certainly, my expectation is that Verbio would still want to move forward with their project. Really, the reason that they wanted to annex within, into the city of Nevada versus even the city of Ames, or trying to develop within Story County, was that they really wanted to work just with one municipality, having that relationship already there and not having to worry about if there's an issue on one side or the other, who do they call? If there's no water on one side or any of those pieces? And so if the annexation ultimately didn't go through, I would expect that they would likely engage then with the city of Ames to look at annexation into the city of Ames or come before you all and see about doing the development within Story County. I confess, I don't know the full scope of the planning process there and what that would take, but I suppose we'll cross that bridge when we come to that one.
So there's, I'm hearing quite a few unknowns.
Yeah.
What are?
I guess I have one question tonight.
Who are you on the board here, like, Darren?
But should the, should this move forward, should they not meet the agreement on the increase in personnel and the county then could potentially have to pay back that grant? Does that come out of our general fund?
Yeah, it would come out of our general fund. That's exactly what the city of Ames is looking at with ISU Research Park and that RISE grant with the type of work even that didn't go through. and that RISE grant with the type of work even that didn't go through. Or, I mean, they didn't make their numbers in Ames. That's why I said from my perspective, the decision is, do we bother with the RISE grant? And face that risk of it? Because Darren, now this will go to Darren, but Darren, correct? I believe you said that 220th farm-to-market, correct? So that if we did pay those two miles, we have fundings, we have, we can use farm-to-market money, right?
Yeah, that's a possibility, but right now it's a bonding project, so it's not even farm-to-market money now, it's, uh, strictly bond money.
It'd be bond money.
We issued a bond already, but it did not include this project, so, um, it was approved to bond for, but we haven't issued the bond for it. So we'd have to bond again to include this in the bond funds.
Then repayment of bond is out of the debt service levy, not the general fund levy. So, yeah, so for us, it might, for the county, sorry, I almost know it wrong for us.
I know what you meant.
Yeah, it might be better to pass on this. I mean, it's, it sounds like great money, but the risk is high there. I also have to be honest, and the fact that that company, I know it's a, a, a German company, correct? Is that what it is? But that they've not even reached out to us once, and now here there's this request. It's like the supervisors actually have more certainty of going with it as the bonded project. Then who knows what that, what Verbio would do if, if they see that they are making their targets?
I have a question, a few more.
Yes.
If the numbers are actually going down, traffic count numbers are actually going down on that east mile,
Uh-huh.
and the city of Nevada is not wanting to commit to paving 600 there, give me your best case for paving that mile.
Best case is, is that I'm looking at the growth that will go south still, the reas- the, the industrial park area. I'm looking at the increased use of the railroad, which may have some of the railroad crossings, and those side tracks, the spur tracks, which may have something to do with that difference from 180 to 140. People are looking for other ways to get around down there at that six, corner of 600 and East 13th. 220th leads right to the interstate on East 13th. It is a much better avenue for people to take in large machinery to get to the interstate. And Lincoln Way is getting more and more crowded. Those, those are the arguments. I guess, and I follow that up with, there's already been a lot of investment in that area or with the industrial park with a line on the purchase options or whatever. I think this is the two miles that's gonna yield the largest return over time. And that includes the city still pushing to try and get some kind of retail, not that I, you know, but, but there at East 13th. This is, this is where I, that's why.
I, I was really hoping that, well, it gets back to the highway security issue, that DOT would look at something on 600. There, at least an overpass there, because they really are. A lot of people are just getting landlocked, or farmers who live on, you know, have, someone on the south side of the road, need to get to the north side, and that's gonna be closed off. I was thinking that makes 600, would have made 600 more likely to be paved in the future. But I'm gonna ask Jordan to speak about 600. And why Nevada's not wanting to move on that right now? Is it just money or is it something else? What, what's your int-
600th or 610th?
600th.
It's my understanding that the city is, we haven't really discussed anything on 600. With the DRT, we're plan, our plans are to do everything on 610, Airport Road or West 18th. Um, the interpass would be, uh, down on Airport Road or 18th, however you wanna refer to it. Um, but yeah, it's my understanding that we've never wanted to do anything with 600.
Darren said that you had a few years ago, it predates you. But it was you were talking about paving to 20th, both miles. There was discussion of then the city of Nevada paving to, um, 600 from 220th to Lincoln Way.
And actually, part of 600 is already paved. From P Co-op down to Lincoln Way is already paved.
So it's to the railroad tracks, pardon me, thank you.
Yeah, so is that half a mile?
See, that's my problem, is, is doing both of those miles, just stopping at a kind of dead end of pavement. Doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, if, if people start using it more, then what we've got is we've got a gravel road, half a mile of gravel road, that's gonna get a lot more traffic.
And Darren, am I correct in remembering that at one point we said we'd even help pay for the cost of that half a mile on 600 to be, to close that loop? Or include it?
I don't, I don't recall offering anything here. We had offered to pay for this portion that's 100% in the city as part of our bond project on 2, 220th.
Thank you.
I was thinking, I was remembering that you said we could include it and do it together, or Nevada paid for that half a mile.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about letting them, yeah, tie onto our project to maybe save some cost.
So, so, uh, a question for John and Jordan, I guess, which either ones have been talking to Verbio. All right, here. So is there a time-sensitive element that has prompted you also with the rise? I noticed the grants are, the applications are only twice a year. I mean, the deadlines are twice a year. So, but from the other end, is Verbio waiting to hear something from us? Or is this, like John said, just, you know, hey, there's the money available, so if you wanna use it, try and get it?
Well, and the, the immediate opportunity grants, uh, are not built on, um, or, there's the, the, the timing on that, um, being due, uh, February 1st. Um, but the, the other component is the job creation. So Verbio is in the process of scaling up their hiring, uh, to, to meet, um, their fir- first element of their facility coming online. And so the opportunity for us to capture those jobs as part of the RISE application is, is really the, the impetus for moving this forward. And, and to be fair, we've got to create a narrative to make the case on all of those jobs, and certainly if we fall short of that, they may kick some jobs out or, or, or pieces on that. Uh, but as they hire, we, we lose the ability to even try and make the case on those jobs. And each job is, is, um, it's built on, uh, being, uh, considered a high-quality job per, per the standard with the state of Iowa. Uh, and it's, it's built on, um, basically the, the hourly rate. Um, now, the DOT does it a little differently than the Iowa Economic Development Authority, where they average the job creation, and the number of jobs that are above the average, uh, basically kicking out the lowest ones. That, that's the money that you're eligible for. It's, it's a weird formula, um, but it's $13,000 a job, is ultimately what, what we're potentially eligible for. And, and so that's really the, the reason for bringing this forward at this time is, is to make sure that we're maximizing our ability to capture dollars from this, this other pot of money. Uh, yeah, obviously if this is a road that you guys want to go down.
Um, let me double check on numbers. Darren said it's not gonna be 1.2, but one more, like 1.35 million. And John, in the notes that you sent us, if all 56 jobs qualify, we'd be eligible for up to 728,000? That, is that the correct number, 728,000?
So that, that is up to, yeah, up to 728,000. That's 56 jobs at $13,000 per job. Um, like I said, we have to meet the high-quality standard. Uh, and, uh, and i- it's based on how many jobs that we can make the case are, are tied to this, this road. So I say up to 728,000. And in the, the questions, um, that, that I responded to that are part of the packet, I was working on the, um, the previous number that Darren had provided me of 1.2, but, but as Darren clarified earlier, that's, that's really 1.3 to 1.5. So, um, so my numbers in terms of the estimated remaining costs and the percentage of the overall project are, are off based on, on that new number. Um, but the 728 would be the maximum eligible dollars that we would be, uh, able to apply for.
That's where I'm trying to get, John, because that, in, I just did a quick calculation, that changes the 472 to 622,000 for what would be remaining. Now, my next question is, if 22% of that mile will be Nevada's, is Nevada going to cover part of that?
Uh, we are discussing that right now, yeah. We, I mean, we, if this is something that the county wants to pursue, and if we are, um, going for the RISE grant, then yeah, we definitely wanna capitalize on that because it'll make our overall budget lower for that project.
Jordan, I don't know, you're not coming through very well. You're very quiet. Can you talk a little louder or get a little closer to your speaker?
Yeah, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
I can repeat what you just said.
Yeah, uh, so the city's initial plan was not to, but with talking, uh, to Darren and John, if we are able to capitalize on this RISE grant, we'll be able to lower the, the overall cost for our percentage of the project, which is very, um, incentivizing for us. So it is something that we'd be willing to partake in if we are able to capitalize on that RISE grant and get tho- those monies from it.
Does the answer maybe or yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then you would pay, then you also would be obligated for one-fourth of that, uh, payback?
Correct.
What do you mean payback?
In the case that the jobs don't make it.
Well, that was something that John mentioned, that there could be a developers, a agreement with the, with Verbio, a developers' agreement, that they would pay it back if the jobs didn't come through? John, is, has Verbio agreed to that?
Uh, no, Verbio hasn't agreed to that at this point, but, um, it, it'd be like any development agreement that we'd negotiate for, for, uh, an economic development project in that, um, the company would be held to creating the jobs that they said that they were gonna create. In the event they fell short, um, you'd have a, a, both a, um, uh, you'd, you'd have a way to go after them for those dollars back. Uh, and, uh, certainly, um, I, I, you know, I'm not, not an attorney, but I know that there, that gives you some legal avenues to pursue in the event that they refuse to pay it back with liens on the facility and, and, and the like. Um, certainly I would think that that would be something that would help protect you, help, help to, um, give you guys at least a little bit of, uh, comfort in being protected on, on that payback.
John, how much, how much did Nevada lose when DuPont bailed? I mean, during that development agreement?
That development agreement clogged back everything. So, uh, Nevada didn't lose any money.
Thank you. I just, been my experience in 20-plus years covering government, how many times developers haven't been able to pay out.
Well, and-
I was just gonna say, uh, my question is, uh, would you enter into some sort of agreement prior to, if we move forward with the RISE grant, that Verbio would be, um, uh, responsible for any of those jobs not created? That you know that ahead of time? Or would you be looking at having this grant, uh, applied for first and then enter into an agreement with them?
I, I think we'd move concurrently on it.
Well, I would like to know that, for one thing, that it's not a flat-out no, that they've been, been, um, apprised of this idea, and that they're saying they have, they're willing to do that. Um, I mean, otherwise it's just a, an idea, not a, not a guarantee.
I think that's a, a good route that we, John and I and Darren can take, and I think it would be smart of us to talk to Verbio about that. Um, as far as a contract goes, personally, I'd rather see a contract before rather than during or after. That way we can capitalize on that side of things. Um, but, uh, that agreement probably would not be coming from the city because we are not doing the bonding, so that would have, it would have to come to, from the county for that. But it is something that we, we, I would agree with Supervisor Merkin. We need to get something in place before rather than after or during.
And I think I'm hearing that the city of Nevada does not want to be the applicant for the RISE grant, or would the city consider being the applicant?
We are not, we aren't the ones going out for the bond for the majority of the project. It would be the county that is doing that. So I believe the county should be the one responsible for being the applicant for that bond, since they are covering the 78% of the roadway.
I, for, just from some information Darren gave us, I don't know that that means that we have to, because we have the majority of it, but if that's the way you, that you're wanting to think about it, um, we need to know that, okay? So, so we've got a lot of ifs, um. Any other just factual questions before we discuss? Is this discussion, do we do-
Well, we have to give, we, we're giving this as a direction.
And we probably need to have a little discussion among ourselves in order to give direction.
I have no other factual question that has come.
Supervisor Headness, do you?
No, I was just reading, kinda reading Darren's email, um, to us, and I think all my questions so far have been answered through our discussions, though I might have some additional ones that come up.
Yeah, okay. So I'm trying to think of the things that we need more information on. One of them is, and I just wanna list them. One of them is Verbio. Are they willing to do a development agreement, as we've discussed?
And you're including development, you're meaning the personnel?
Yes, it's, it's a development agreement, as John talked about. If the project failed to meet its obligation, since the county would be responsible, reducing the risk of the development agreement placing Verbio on a hook for the payback. If they didn't create all the jobs. That was in his last paragraph.
Right.
So that's one thing. The other thing I could think of is what the city of Ames in, intends or might guarantee regarding the 580th crossing. And I know that if you didn't think, if you thought it was likely, you would be coming to us with this, I, I don't think Verbio would be looking at this idea and be coming to us, but just a little more, to me, reassurance that that's, that we know.
We, we kind of do know. They're not gonna do anything because of the discussions during the 2045 plan. I brought up, I brought up, what are you gonna do about 580th? And I said, you know, it, it is a bridge or not a pass, or, you know, what are you gonna do here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, and they declined to, it didn't make anywhere on their list, and the estimate on that was tens of millions of dollars.
So what you're saying is that they weren't talking about an improvement? Or were they talking, might they talk about closing?
Oh, I see, okay, that's the question.
No, and it didn't come up, we were talking about improvement.
Yeah, so the question about, is there any intent or likelihood of closing that, and then that's whatever? And then I would add to that, then, if, can we get any estimates from U.P. about traffic on there? And, Eric, did they anticipate increased traffic? Those spurs, again, I turned around and I came down 220th again to work this morning. So not that I don't want 220th, uh, the road is beautifully maintained, Darren, thank you, but I, you know, um, that's gonna get worse and worse. So it might, there's a de facto closing, closure of it also, with increased traffic on those spurs and them switching out.
Is that information that can be obtained easily, readily? John?
I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about getting any kind of commitment from the city of Ames regarding the 580th closing. I'm, I'm not confident that they've even, even speculated about what they want to do at 580th. I don't know that there's been any consideration from them, formally or informally, about the closure at 580th. To be honest, I don't know if they all even know that this is in their jurisdiction to decide that, because the north side is within the county, even though the entire rail crossing is in the city. So I, I certainly can ask the questions of, of the administration and, and see, but I don't know if that's an issue that needs to go to city council for formal consideration. It probably depends a lot on what level of commitment you're looking for from them in terms of closure, or, or lack thereof.
And that's a hard one to get a city council, a city divine to-
I think the administration would be reasonable. What other things do we have? Do we have some other things that, we, we entertain Nevada would be willing to pay part? I assume that's on a pro-rated basis, based stone, or something like that, around the 22%. I'm trying to look at my notes, I think there are a couple other things, I think, I think. The, the issue that seems iffy is to me on this, is whether DOT will look at those jobs that are being created at the current site, and, and how strongly they see that link to the 220th paving. You know, it seems that, you know, John, I, I've heard you're willing to be the resource for the narrative, the business part of this, and Darren would be for the engineering costs and any diagrams, I assume. But we would be putting a significant amount of time, I don't know what Jordan's role would be in this, but we would be putting a significant amount of time into, into a grant application that has kind of a semi-significant if to it. On the other hand, I'm very cognizant of taxpayers' money on accounting level and property tax rates and debt service and all of that, and if there's a way to make this work and bring in and bond for much less than we normally do, I'm, I'm thinking there's some value in trying to proceed.
A decision to proceed here for staff investment time and getting questions answered, it probably would be worthwhile for whatever decision you make for the taxpayers, I would say. You guys will be making it after a thought, but I think that today, you know, to, to get those questions answered, and Darren really knows what time commitment from his standpoint might, or staff might be, but yeah, getting those questions answered certainly might pay off. I guess the other thing, you know, maybe for the next step, okay, then, it'd be for, because Verbio is an international company, and, and, you know, we've had great success in Story County with some international companies, Sour, Starman Post now, okay, is a good example of that, okay? But maybe just a little bit more checking or asking the AEDC to look in further about really what Verbio is. They're a new owner of this property within the last, what, two years? Just find out what their reputation is about carrying through on it.
I just had another thought. If 580th were to close at any point, would 600 be the other, where Verbio would have to go to get to that site?
So it depends on how important paving act, or paved access is. So if, if this is paved, 220th from 580th to 590th and 580th were to close, they could make the decision, so it'd be, it'd be kind of a fuel consumption versus paved road decision. They could loop back to 600 and come around, or they could go all the way down to Dayton Road in Ames, come back up and down 13th. Those would be the two avenues for them, truck routes. So it'd be a fuel consumption versus a paved or non-paved road decision for them internally.
The RISE funding is just on the number of jobs times 13,000, it's not on the number of miles. So adding a second mile into it as an alternate route wouldn't get us any more money, never mind. I'm not just trying to go someplace, I think I was in the road too. Okay.
No doubt.
Yeah. But that's something to look at.
And John, just a question on the timing. You might be aware of this, but immediate opportunity, it sounds like they need four weeks. The application needs to be in four weeks before the DOT council meeting, and they meet every, once, the second Tuesday of every month. So already looking at probably a minimum four to five weeks out, we'd have to put this application together, so at least out a couple months, and so when you check with Verbio, make sure, one, if they can hold off that long on hiring, and then talk to them about, kind of narrow down that number of jobs that would actually qualify.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to pin in, pin down a lot more of these pieces. There'd be, yeah, it'll probably take a couple of months to put the application fully together and to, to answer and check all the marks of the, the DOT, and looking at the, the last RISE grant that, that I worked on was for the Burke project in Nevada, and it took us about two months of time to actually get that application put together. You know, there's a lot of letters of support, a lot of components around that, that, that we also take the time to put together to make sure that our application was as strong as possible. So all of those pieces take time, but we'd, we'd lay out a plan and a timeline on it. I just wanted to bring this forward to you all first before, you know, we invest a whole bunch of time and, and certainly trying to be respectful of Darren's time as well, if this is something that you guys want to, want to pursue.
The application has to be in four weeks before the second Tuesday of every month, so February 9th is the second Tuesday. You'd have to back up four weeks, would you have it January 9th?
Well, I apologize, I had looked at, at something incorrect when I looked at the RISE thing, looking at the, the funding timelines of February 1 and September 1. That is only for the competitive funding around, so that is the non-immediate impact opportunity funds. So we're not beholden to a, a specific timeline on that, is just a, they take these applications on a month-by-month basis and bring it forward to their board.
You'd have to have it in by January 12th to meet their February 9th date, correct?
Correct.
And it also technically takes a letter from the RPA, which is CERTPA, and we won't meet again until mid-January to get approval for something like this, so that would be another time constraint.
Is that every other month, Darren, or I thought it was every quarter? We're meeting on Thursday, CERTPA.
Yeah, we won't be able to make that one, so the next meeting would be, I think, January 17th or something.
Got it, okay, thank you.
No, we're November now, so that'd be December, January, February, that's my point, it'd be February.
That's maybe quarterly, not every other day.
Right, and so if we're meeting this Thursday, then if he's saying January, I'm just saying it's the February.
There is a meeting in January, so.
Okay, thank you. January 17, you say? It's still, it's still after the 12th, which is your deadline.
And, and we'll, we'd work with the DOT on that. So we've had past applications, we've gotten the bulk of the application and understanding that there's one pending piece that, that may come in slightly after the deadline. At, at the end of the day, they need the four weeks to review it, provide questions back to the applicant, then receive feedback on that before it goes to their board. So if, if we're able to get through the bulk of the application and submit by January 12th, but there are one or two pieces hanging out there, likely depending on those pieces, the count, or the, the DOT would be willing to work with us on the actual submission date on those. Just understanding that they need to be in before the commissioners can vote on it, but really what the staff's looking at is the completeness of the application, as well as whether they can recommend approval.
So you've got some fleshing out to do of the proposal, and to get back to us in a couple weeks, or whenever you're ready, but you've, you've got the timeline in mind and how fast you can work. Any other questions I have, those, those three? Did either-
No, but you're wanting, it sounds like they have them come back before us with these questions answered within, what, by the early part of December?
Well, and as soon as they have the answers, I think a few weeks.
We'll, we'll get after it, as soon as we can get it put together, we'll, we'll look to put this on an agenda, bring it back before you and, and get your, your feedback and response at that time.
Okay. So any other direction? Okay, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of good information, thank you for your patience with all these questions. I, I feel like I have more of a sense of where we are and, yeah, so, you have any other, any of you have any other thoughts that you want to leave us with before we move on?
No, I don't think so. Thank you guys for your time and consideration on this. We'll, we'll be back before you with hopefully some, some additional answers to some of these questions, and I can go from there. Ultimately, I, I appreciate you guys taking the time to, to at least offer this consideration at this time. I, I do agree with Supervisor Olson, I think that 220th back towards Nevada is going to provide critical infrastructure as the two communities continue to expand. So I do want to reiterate that ultimately, I think there's value in paving all the way back, but anything we can do to capture some additional dollars to get even a little bit closer to that, I think just makes that, that conversation that much easier. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody.
Is there anything else?
Uh, no, not at this time. Really appreciate you guys' time on, on this and appreciate you getting all those questions ready for us and everything that John was able to present, so we will be back speaking with you here in a few weeks after we get the answers. Thank you.
Darren, anything else?
Nope, I don't have anything to add, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you all. Okay, we will head on then. Okay. We have a public hearing item, first consideration of ordinance 291, amendments to chapter 80 floodplain management program. Amelia Schoneman.
Yes. This is part of the adoption process for our new floodplain maps in Story County. The Federal Emergency Management Agency completes new flood insurance rate maps, and as part of the new study they completed, those are scheduled to be adopted on January 15th. We have to make our ordinance meet their minimum requirements as part of that adoption process, so that's the basis of these changes. The DNR reviewed our ordinance and suggested these changes, and we also had Leanne's feedback, and Darren and Margaret reviewed it as well. So they're really mostly pretty minor changes. The amendments include changing the words use in building to development and structure, because development and structure are defined in the ordinance. The new and substantially improved structures in the floodway fringe will be required to have electrical heating, ventilation, plumbing, et cetera, elevated three feet, which will match our current requirements for other structures. And then there's also a new section for maximum damage potential development, and that's not required, but it was suggested by the DNR, something the DNR requires already. And so for maximum damage potential structures such as hospitals, they have to be elevated above, three feet above the base flood elevation level of 500-year floodplain. The ordinance before you also includes the adoption of the actual new floodplain maps that were prepared as part of the flood insurance study. So action on the ordinance will approve the changes and then allow those maps to be adopted. Once you have taken action, at the final consideration, we will send the publication, the summary publication to the DNR for approval, and they'll send it to FEMA for approval, and then we can adopt. Then we'll have the final maps adopted by January 15th. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed the item, but they didn't take action because it's not part of our land development regulations. I just wanted their feedback and for them to be aware, and they didn't really have any questions or changes other than just a few. And county departments did review this, including the county attorney. So I can answer any questions, or we've got Leanne here too, who's a great resource.
Are there any questions from the supervisors?
There is none from me, we've done this before.
Yeah.
There's none from me.
Okay. There are no questions, then I'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments for the public on this proposed ordinance? And hearing none, and I don't know, Leanne, can you see if anybody's got a hand raised? Before I close it? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion for approval on first consideration of ordinance number 291.
And set second.
I'm sorry, what?
And set second consideration.
And set second consideration of number 24, considered on this, and the first, for the ordinance.
So who?
Um, did you want to just set second consideration, because we could always wait third up Tuesday, rather than just set one?
True. Sorry about that.
What? Do you accept that amendment, that we just go steps to second consideration for Tuesday, November 24th, period?
She's saying because we can always-
Wait, third one.
Yeah, next week. Yes, I would accept that amendment. Okay, second.
Okay. So, all in favor of the motion, please sit in five by saying aye.
Aye, I'll do that, but Olson, yes. There you go.
So I'm sorry, Olson, yes.
Yes.
Excuse me.
You're doubly approved.
We can just do it that way. Okay, Merkin, aye. Merkin, aye. It is ordinance approved, thank you. And Leanne, consideration of amendments to the bylaws and program guidelines in Story County Economic Development Group, we did some discussion of this last week. Did you have anything else you would like to say in regards to that?
Yes, but I can't see.
We had two things that we discussed in this, and one of them was-
The membership.
Yeah, first, we discussed the definitional change, change in definition, and the membership.
Thank you for letting me take a moment to bring that up too, and I'll share the screen here in a second, that's for the next item. Regarding the bylaws, I did have a chance to email Drew Camp, who used to work for Ames Economic Development Commission. As I said last week, I was on the fringe of the discussions on the bylaw change last, last year, or this year and last year. He did indicate that that specific statement regarding representation for more than one community was to allow, or to address, and possibly to allow, as Supervisor Olson said, individuals from AEDC or other entities to represent more than one community. With that, with that confirmation or comment from Mr. Camp, I, I do agree with Supervisor Olson, I, I think there is a necessity to have community representation, and again, if we run into some issues like we have in the past- And again, if we run into some issues like we have in the past with whether we now have technology that we can do, anyone unless they're in a snowplow, which we have had that in the past too, anyone can join in. So I would actually, I did not revise the agenda item just because I knew you were having this discussion today, but I would recommend not striking that. But that means I would, we probably want to take it back to the Economic Development Group before you take action. So with that, I would recommend, based on your discussion today, that it goes before, back to the Story County Economic Development Group in January, their quarterly meeting, and then I would bring it back to the board.
So there's no hurry in getting this?
Well, with that one particular section, the remainder of the changes I think can be made now, and that is to clarify the program guidelines and the types of applicants making or applications that can be received, making sure they're consistent between the two. Because we'll start that process, believe it or not, after the first year. So everything except for that one line.
Olson, you want to consider adopting them with the exception of the phrase in section 1.03, membership quotient being stripped?
Mm-hmm. Correct. And then I would take that back to the Economic Development Group.
And then we can look down. Is there a motion?
Well, I've got questions first.
Okay.
So I also thought that we had discussion under the project funds under H, where it talked about excluding the general infrastructure and routine maintenance upkeep. I may be incorrect, but I was. But that change is now in. If I understand correctly here, here's what we're doing for changes. Help me out, Leanne. So A, we're on the document itself, amendments to, because it just, yeah, right? Okay. So A, economic development staff and administration, that's been kind of added, right?
It was actually, it was in one and not in the other.
Not in either.
So that's where we had the inconsistencies that we needed to make sure that they both were the same.
So under G, they struck in advance they're not eligible, right? Which, you know, like I said, the rest of these are, I understand, maybe Maxwell Days is, I mean, the rodeo is the big thing and they could use them. Okay, all right. And then under H, we're adding excluding general infrastructure, routine maintenance and upkeep to make sure both documents agree with each other, correct? That's where I was trying to. Yeah, that was, yeah. I got lost at first two. And then under J, they struck entrance because sometimes it's not the entrance that's their big thing, but it's their part. Right, right, right. Okay, so that's what I had. No, that's, thanks for that reminder. It was balancing the two that they were consistent. I do remember there was inconsistency last year because people, when they scored, the A through N was different than, you know, what we were looking at, so.
So am I correct then that we would be adopting with the exception of the stricken phrase in one form or two?
Correct, yes.
Then if we do, any other questions before I entertain a motion?
So Olson, my turn. I move that we adopt the new wording for the Story County Economic Development Group bylaws with the exception of the striking of the one phrase about representing more than one community. And that we send it back to the Story County Economic Development Group for approval by them of this, of the documents that we approved. Well.
Okay, yeah.
Does that work?
That would work. Or you can approve it as a, they've already approved it and then you, and then they go back and reconsider the other part.
Okay, I move that we approve it with the one verbiage strictly.
That makes a little bit cleaner.
Yeah, that's cleaner. I don't know, apparently my tongue doesn't work today. I'll second.
Okay. If the move is seconded, is there further discussion? If not, Olson.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye, approved. Okay, we will then go on. Leanne, you have the next part?
I do. And I shared my screen up there. I did say last week I'd go back and just get a sense, and it crosses into both the previous agenda item and this one, the types of projects that were acted on. I unfortunately only have the applications truly in total dating back to fiscal year 17, and that is really when staff, county staff started providing technical assistance to the Story County Economic Development Group. I do have some information on the nature of the projects for fiscal years four, five, and six, but between fiscal year seven and fiscal year 17, I don't have any information. So just quickly, I did put on the screen, and I can't see it, so I'll have to look at my copy here, but I did include what was all requested for fiscal year 21. But in fiscal year 20, I think you all three remember those, but, and just some other projects we've had, we've had asbestos abatement, murals, lots of signage projects. In fiscal year 18, which it won't, I can't get to scroll down there. In fiscal year 18, we did have like the Miracle League playground, but we had some ADA compatible bathrooms for the Wellness Center in Collins. Again, signage, you see that definitely as a continuation throughout. In 2017, replacement of flooring in the Wellness Center, again, signage studies. Then you go back to fiscal years six to five, those are really signage brochures, funding for new visitor center, streetlights. I just wanted to have a snapshot so you had a sense of what some of the projects have been. I believe all three board members did receive an email from Mr. Steve Gast with the city of Maxwell, so I won't reiterate that, but he did discuss and provide some feedback on Maxwell's application. I'm going to stop sharing this unless anyone has any questions.
Yes, we need to keep moving, so I hope, so, because we saw several items up here, some of which were from last, so I'm going to ask to move quickly on it. Cam. I reviewed Mr. Gast's mail and I've got to make a point. Sorry, I don't know, the other supervisors. What is our pleasure on this?
I'm not willing to make the motion for Maxwell. I would make a motion for approval of the other ones, and then maybe take Maxwell separately. That's one way to go. So I make that motion that we approve all but Maxwell. And we'll let Maxwell separate.
I'll second.
Let's remove it second. Discussion, if not, Olson?
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We have, if everything's at Maxwell, now we'll talk about Maxwell separately.
I certainly understand wanting ADA compliance. I'm the one who has the mobility issues, okay? So it just, it's an interpretation about how far away you get from what is considered economic development or not. So I said my thoughts yesterday, or I mean, last week, so.
Yeah, no, I personally thought he made some good points in his email. I had to, I'm going to pull it back up to review again. You know, you connect the argument that is signage economic development or is getting to and from a particular location supporting economic development. And I do say that this is a reasonable, a reasonable request.
Further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I think that we approve the request by Maxwell for the SED project.
I second the motion. Okay, further discussion? If not, Edens.
Aye.
Olson.
Nay.
Merkin, aye. Carries. Maxwell's approved. Anything else, Leanne?
No, none of those.
Thank you. Then we'll go to item four here, discussion and consideration of Resolution 21.35 prevailing major subdivision for tradition final plat, Amelia Shoneman. And there are additional information, additional information. And Amelia, why, could you, essentially we went through it all before, could you just really summarize the additional information?
Yep. So at the last meeting, there were concerns raised about the change from planning to extend natural gas to using propane or other types of energy for heat. We prepared a memo based on those concerns, and essentially, when we reviewed the application, natural gas isn't required to be extended under our code. It wasn't a condition of rezoning or CTC plan amendments or preliminary plat. So staff determined that it didn't need, you know, didn't cause the final plat to need to be sent back to the preliminary plat stage and that no other conditions were required on it. So staff would recommend alternative two, just with a condition on the subdrain plan. However, if the board finds that it's a, you know, a deviation from the preliminary plat, and we did also provide some language from subdivisions that are nearby in the restricted covenants that state that propane tanks of use shall be buried. There is also some language provided on screening if you didn't want to do a condition that they be buried, so you could add a condition, and the developer, Kurt Friedrich, would be, he would be on board with that condition if that was how you wanted to treat the change. And the other alternative, you know, if the boards determined that it was such a large deviation from the preliminary plat, the final plat should be denied, the applicant could bring forward an amended preliminary plat, or their applicant could appeal the denial to district court. And I believe Kurt Friedrich, the applicant is on the line, and may have some additional notes on the percentages of folks that use LP tanks in other subdivisions. And then Ethan might also have a few comments or if there are any questions.
You have to show up adjusted a third one at times.
So if there's any questions for me about the additional info in the memo, I'm happy to take those.
I don't, I really appreciated your November 17 memo. Thank you, Amelia. And Ethan waited, helped weigh in on that. That was very clear to me, helped reason it out. So my only question is for Kurt, who I see is on the line, and I even kind of let him know I was going to ask this question. So Kurt, can you give me the pros and the cons about burying an LP tank as opposed to hiding it with appropriate, you know, bushes or whatever?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Can you hear me? I'm not sure if I'm visible on the screen or not. I've been having some difficulty with my Zoom.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So in terms of advantages, really the lone advantage would be more of an aesthetic. Obviously, it would be, it would be subterranean and would not be, would not be visible. So if the primary concern was regarding aesthetic and view, that eliminates that. But that's really the lone benefit, if you will. There are more disadvantages than advantages to burial of tanks. Number one, typically when delivering LP gas, it is done through an above-ground tank, which can be rented on an annual basis from your local cooperative for $30 to $50 a year. Whereas a buried tank, because it is subject to rust and corrosion, has to be a special type of tank that has a different kind of lining, and it also typically requires that the buyer or owner of the home purchase the tank, and that tank can cost as much as $5,000. So that's a significant difference between above-ground and below-ground in terms of just the type of tank and the cost associated with that tank to the homeowner. A below-ground tank also requires annual inspections. And another disadvantage is the actual location of that tank and then locates for subsequent work that owners may want to do related to fencing, tiling, underground lines of various and sundry nature. You know, there's potential risk of damaging the tank. So, so those are concerns about burial. Again, the lone benefit being more aesthetic. And I guess I just, I too want to note that again, that this, this was not propane or natural gas was not a condition of the preliminary plat. So while we are, we are open to and want to work with, with you to come up with a solution here that, that is amenable, it was not required by staff in their, in their recommendation. Further, I guess we've done some additional research on, on the situation here with, with LP tanks and in neighboring subdivisions particularly. So right next door to the northwest, we've got Buck Hill, which obviously is in Boone County, but it's right next door, across the street to the, to the west and to the north. And then to this immediate south is Eagle Ridge. And in talking with Midland Power, the electric provider to the area, we've gotten some percentages of who is really, who's using gas and who isn't using gas. And in Buck Hill, only, only about 35% of the households are using LP gas, are using gas to heat their homes or otherwise. And by otherwise, what I mean, sometimes homeowners will just, will have a, a LP tank to provide gas for like a gas range or for a fireplace, for example, but they're, but not using LP to heat their home. But in terms of heating their home, about 35% in Buck Hill. The remainder of the property owners were using air source heat pumps, which are electric powered, or geothermal to heat their homes. So 65% of the homes in Buck Hill were using air source heat pump or geothermal. At Eagle Ridge, that number is even higher. It was closer to 80% are using air source heat pumps or geothermal rather than LP or a gas solution. And then further, at Cameron Estates, and Cameron is different in terms of its proximity from the get-go, its proximity to existing natural gas. There was already natural gas through Alliant in front of the property. Whereas in the situation with Prairie Valley, it's a mile and a half away, is what we've, we've learned. But at Cameron Estates, even with the presence of natural gas, only 45, 45% of the residents, or roughly half, are actually using gas. Half are still using the air source heat pumps or geothermal for their heating solutions. So I think that's important, important to note because regardless So I think that's important, important to note because regardless of the delivery of, of gas, it just goes to show that only 50 to, 50 to 60% will, will actually choose to use geothermal or air-source heat pumps. And ultimately, that means that there's likely to be no more than 50% of the homes in Prairie Valley would be utilizing gas. So we won't have an abundance of, of LP tanks at the end of the day.
So Amelia, I have a question. I'm looking at kind of some of the previous emails.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm looking at the one that was dated that February 27th. So this is part of the preliminary plat, the middle, the story county, they require a letter from Alliant Energy, now with saying, I think they meant, Alliant Energy will provide electrical and gas for the property. And so I have that there. And then there's another email that says, yes, they will.
Yeah. So the actual letter, let's see. So the requirement in our code is that they provide a written and signed statement about the availability of gas. So it's not a requirement that has to, gas has to be provided, it's a letter that states the availability. The applicant provided that actual letter, and it said they were investigating options to service the property. And then that, I believe the email followed up that said, is that the email you're talking about with the cost and then that?
I'm looking at an email from John Gady with Quasimodo.
Yeah. It, does it state that the project would fall under an extension agreement signed by the developer, good for 10 years? Okay. There was an email provided on the Agenda Center as a follow-up to the Alliant Energy letter from the applicant's engineer, John Gady. And that one stated that Alliant had concluded its study of ability to extend natural gas to the subdivision, was planning to supply natural gas, and the cost. And so, yes, you're right, the preliminary plat was improved in part on, that was the plan, to extend natural gas. So it, our code doesn't require the extension, and it wasn't conditioned that it had to be extended.
I guess then is that other, how would we get up into it?
It's part of the final plat review is, does it substantially conform with the preliminary plat? And so that's where the aesthetic concerns or condition on screening or burial would come in because of that change.
Yeah. Are there any other questions to Professor Headman or Supervisor Olson?
No.
No, I guess I would just say, I, Kurt, I appreciate your information on the above-ground or below-ground on propane tanks. I did some research on it as well, and I saw more cons than I did pros on that, that gave me pretty significant reservations in regards to that. Did I hear you say, either Chris say or Amelia say something about fencing or?
Yeah. So I did a little bit of research on screening. We have existing suggested screening for mechanical equipment on commercial sites in our code, and that language is pretty solid, it's what we currently use. I guess staff's concern with screening is that we have to make sure it meets setbacks to ensure that it's not like a combustible material, or if it was a fence, does a 10-foot setback from the propane tank apply because it's a structure under state fire code?
Sure.
So we just have to be cognizant of that.
You mean screening as a structure?
Well, if it was a fence, might be.
If it was a fence.
Might be considered. And I don't, you know, we don't have an adopted fire code, I don't make those interpretations.
First in the bush, so screening would be bushes?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I, over the weekend, I went to both Buck Hills and Eagle Ridge. And I, I got surprised, can't remember whether Eagle Ridge must have a covenant. Because you cannot see an LP tank there anyplace. So if they've got 80%, it's geothermal heat pumps, 20% of 14 is a couple houses that have buried tanks. Buck Hills, I think, I think probably it looked to me like half or fewer, and that was almost 5% I guess, had LP tanks. All but a couple were screened, and I think they were screened with what looked like linear plastic fences. So that would be something to think about. I, I would agree, and I didn't do any research on, on burying LP tanks, but my instinct just said to me, it doesn't seem like a very good idea. And probably has to be a tank that you're going to make sure was rust-proofed and all of that, because you're not going to be looking at it, you know? And it would be a bigger problem if it didn't, you know? So I, I, I would not hold out for burying them at all, but I do think, you know, one LP tank sitting on one farmstead, or even two LP tanks sitting on one farmstead is not a turnoff. I mean, it's what you expect out in the country. 70 LP tanks, or even 30 LP tanks in something like this without screening within this, this dense of development, quite frankly, I think would be pretty awful. I don't know that it's a safety hazard, I never thought it was a safety hazard to me last week, I was just surprised because it wasn't what I was expecting from everything we had seen before. So I, I would be in favor of some kind of screening, and that would be of discretion, maybe, you know, planning and developing, looking at that more, and determining what to develop, what's, what's appropriate, what's safe, and what's going to work.
Okay. I guess, and if there's a slide that suggested condition, if you want to go that route, would be then, if you didn't want to come up with language, if you wanted to leave it to staff, would be that the restrictive covenant should be amended prior to the final plat requiring screening. And then we could work with the applicant and his attorney to amend the covenants to require screening. And I think it's the next slide.
I don't see it there.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yep. So it's the first bullet point, you could add a condition. And then we could get the restrictive covenants amended, and then we record the flat after satisfactory language was in there. If you wanted to come up with the language yourself, I put the screening requirements for mechanical equipment in our code as the, their second nested bullet point, for your Basically, what I would take from that is that it would be screening at least 75% opaque fence or compact hedge from adjacent properties and public streets. To summarize what that says.
Does Shelly have all that?
Um, no, I will send it to Shelly.
Yeah, in the Agenda Center, but I.
Yeah.
I'm not all.
Okay.
It's something that you can do all the time.
It's in the memo, too.
Okay.
So take a stab at a motion? I see the previous screen.
Okay. So, yeah, so we're looking for this one. You go here.
Alternative two is the approval with conditions. We have one staff recommended condition.
So one of the motions will be alternative to, and. And what's on the next slide?
Right, that's, that's what I.
Yeah.
You read, you read that number two.
And then you'd go to the next slide and read that.
So I would make the motion that we approve Resolution 21-35, propose Prairie Valley major subdivision, first addition as put forth in case S U B 06-20 with conditions.
Want to read that first condition?
Oh, is it under that one, or go to the next page?
Read the, no, I think we want Prairie Valley's one as well.
Okay. If the, okay, if the septic locations change, subdrain plan to protect the prairie remnants from runoff from the septic system shall be reevaluated by the developer's engineer and reviewed by the county conservation, environmental health, and planning, planning and development staff.
And then to the next screen.
And then this is the first bullet. And, and an additional condition should be imposed on the final plat to address the change to propane tanks, such as the restrictive covenants shall be amended to, prior to recording of the final plat to require screening or burial of propane tanks, the developers', of the propane tanks.
And then we want to go down to the sub-bullet, the second sub-bullet.
You can. It's up to you, if you want to suggest language.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, she moved. Let's, let's, let's second, or.
Would you entertain a whole?
Okay, you're still in the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make sure we're getting that long motion here. So the fourth screening requirement, Sturridge County of Land Development Regulations, have the following language. Loading docks, truck parking, outside storage, cargo containers, trash collection, utility meters, HVAC equipment, mechanical equipment, material, and equipment storage yards and other service functions shall be incorporated into overall design and landscaping, or be screened from view by a screening fence at least 75% opaque or compact hedge of sufficient height and density to screen that view at maturity within three years, whichever is first, so that the visual and acoustical impacts of these functions are fully contained and out of view from adjacent properties and public streets. I second.
Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to clarify that the list of stuff at the beginning is what's required to be screened. Do you want that in the restrictive covenants, or just that LP tanks should be screened that way? So instead of like HVAC or mechanical and material equipment storage yards, do you want all that language in there?
Well.
Or?
It would seem to me that at least the HVAC, it could be outside, we've all got it, so it's screened back, just leave it all in. I mean, in the worst-case scenario, outside storage, some people do outside storage buildings.
Yeah, I guess that could be.
I, yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to provide you with what the code currently says for commercial sites.
Okay.
Not, yeah, I should have just written language.
All right.
Would you want to take that last part out?
Well, I think we've got a motion, so we need to probably put it down and redo a motion.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay. So your intention would be to make another motion? Okay. Okay. Is that any further discussion then? Headman?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, no. Okay, let's redo the motion now. You want to just go back to the. Brian, hold on to your hair.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping, I was on mute, I heard a dog bark, I was going to jump in and say something here.
Okay, we need to get moving, so can we redo?
Go back to the first page. Okay, so, I'll make the motion that the Sturridge County Board of Supervisors approves Resolution 21-35, propose Prairie Valley major subdivision, first addition as put forth in case S U B 06-20 with conditions. If the septic locations change, the subdrain plan to protect the prairie remnants from runoff from the septic system shall be reevaluated by the developer's engineer and reviewed by county conservation, environmental health, and planning and development staff.
Next screen.
And can additional condition would be imposed on the final plat to address the change to propane tanks, such as the restrictive covenant shall be amended prior to recording of the final plat to require screening or burial of the propane tanks.
Stuff there. So, yeah, did you like?
Okay.
Just up there? Is that good?
Yes, and we'll just move forward to the understanding that it's screening, not burial?
Yeah, so, so I would go back to the screening, I'd go back to screening of the, screening, okay? And then I'm going to jump down to that second bullet point, and I'm going to say, all right, by a screening fence, at least 75% opaque or compact hedge of sufficient height and density to screen the view at maturity or within three years, whichever is first, so that the visual and acoustical impacts of these functions are fully contained and out of view from adjacent properties and public streets. Do you accept that addition?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So she took out, so, you know, she took out the four burial propane tanks.
Yes.
And stopped after the screening and then went down.
And then we went to all the other, and got rid of all that other stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have.
I have the motion.
You have changed, okay.
She did a friendly amendment, which I accepted.
Well, we didn't have a second, so we have.
Oh. Oh.
I second, and would you accept as a friendly amendment, all that I stated started by a screening fence and ending with public streets?
Yes.
Okay. Is there further discussion? If not, Headman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Green.
Bye, Ethan.
We have five minutes for the RDG folks, they're going to have to go next. Yeah, I was trying to get that moving along. Is there somebody from RDG?
Amy and Charlie.
Hi.
Hello.
We have to leave a talk period. We have four minutes, I'm sorry, you don't have any more time.
That's okay, you know what, I think in the interest of time then, I will, actually, I had a few slides, Leanne can share those with you, but I'm just going to kind of talk through them, just because I think that'll probably move us along a little bit faster. Thanks again for having us, I guess I should back up and say, it says in my little box here, but Amy Hazi from RDG Planning and Design, Charlie Cowell is also on with us, because I might have to jump off, COVID world we're living in, things are a little crazy, but we wanted to give you just kind of a quick update of where we're at in the process and, and some of the, some of the things that we have learned throughout the process. So right now, we are, actually, maybe I will share this really quick, so you can see this visually, that might help a little bit. We have, we're basically seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, I guess you could kind of say. Yesterday, we had what was supposed to actually be our final meeting with the committee, and they will be receiving the full draft document this week, but they have, we are actually going to circle back and meet with them one more time in December, just to make sure we've answered any final questions they have, and to polish off any final remarks or comments that, that they might want to, to share at that time. So we're moving along quite nicely within the process. I thought you would like to hear maybe a few of the statistics and items that we had been learning throughout the process. So as part of this, we had conducted an online survey, for which we had 323 responses to that survey. We also conducted eight listening sessions with some additional kind of one-on-one conversations that we also tried to sprinkle in, just to make sure we didn't miss anybody in any key, any key stakeholders throughout the county. From that, I just wanted to share a couple things, I thought you might be interested in hearing the, some of the results from the survey. Couple questions that we asked, and, and all of this will be in detail in the draft report, which will be coming out here in the next month. Do you think the current housing supply adequately meets the needs of the, of households types within the county? And we provide a list. So the strongest response coming back of saying, no, we don't think those household needs are being met, we're seasonal workers, multi-generational families, those all both received, over 70% of the respondents felt like they probably weren't being, their needs weren't being met. But also elderly singles and couples and families with children were also strongly felt like those needs were being met. We also, interestingly enough, asked a question about what types of housing do you think are, are most needed or would be the most successful? And it was interesting because basically every example that we gave, people said, yes, we think that would work, yes, that, we think that would work. And I think what that is really telling us, and as we get into the strategies, one of the things we want to focus on is, we really need probably a greater variety of housing within the market. And so what are some strategies that we can be thinking about to provide that, that variety, so that individuals at every stage of life have the housing that they need, from moving to a community to start their career, to downsizing as empty? to a community to start their career to downsizing as empty nesters. So having that variety in the market provides a little bit more healthier mix. But just back to that survey question, um, ninety percent of respondents felt that there was a need for more kind of smaller, affordable two and three bedroom houses. Almost ninety percent also said that mid-sized three bedroom. Over eighty percent said townhomes and duplexes and also independent senior living. So those had some of the really high overwhelming responses, um, that we thought you might be interested in hearing.
Amy, when you, Laura, when you ask those questions though, especially for those, um, did you ask about number of bathrooms at all?
No, we, we do, we do not. We just include what that survey question is, is it says kind of the housing type. So a smaller house, a mid-range house, and we provide a photo, um, and, but we don't include bath, number of bathrooms, so.
I didn't know. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so maybe I'm, I'm going to jump to just in the, um, sense of time here, and we can go into more detail if you have some, um, additional questions on kind of the market analysis and the number crunching part of it. Um, but some of the things that we began to identify as kind of real opportunities and issues that we might want to begin to address and some of the opportunities that we really think we can begin to leverage. One is we have a really high, um, quality of housing stock existing in, in the market today across the county. So it is a pleasure when we work all over the Midwest to go to a county and see such good quality housing. Um, but that also means that it's pretty competitive in the market, and so we've got to find ways that we're continuing to provide some of that variety as we talked about. But we also, um, you know, and Charlie's probably heard me say this like about a gazillion times, but that housing is also our source of our most affordable housing. We aren't going to necessarily be able to produce housing at, at those price points as our existing housing is today. So we've got to make sure that we're continuing to maintain those units, keeping them in good quality condition, but we also need to get them on the market. So we've got to create some movement in the market to get those units out on the market. We need to continue to address the demand for rental housing, and I think this goes across all point, price points is, is kind of what we heard. There's, there's those need for our households making less than eighty percent of, of area income to, to, to need housing, but we're also seeing it in young professionals, young families, individuals moving to a community and trying to put down roots. And, you know, a lot of things I always tell communities is that if someone coming to fill a job can't find the housing in your community and they have to move to the next town over or the next county over to find their housing, getting them back into your community to live is pretty challenging to do once they've, you know, established their kids in a school or, you know, have connections now with a church, whatever it might be. So getting them on their first, um, entry into the community is really important, and rental housing is a big part of that because it's a, it's a lot of times it's the way people try out a, a community. So overwhelmingly, we kind of heard across the board, this need for additional rental housing within the market, and so at varying different price points. So that being an issue that, that we may need to begin to re, um, address. Um, one of the great advantages is your highly respected communities and schools. So that means that, that reinforces us, to us, the market demand that exists out there. People want to be in, in the communities and want to be in the county. Um, we do have active developers that are present that are doing work both regionally and locally, so that is a huge advantage, and how do we tap into that? Because that is a struggle. The labor shortage in the building and trades industry is across the board, um, in every state that I work in. So when we have those skills in our region, that's, that is a benefit. Um, I'm not saying that we don't have a shortage, but, um, we do have those, uh, in the region. Services for under you, um, there are services for the, um, kind of underserved populations within the area, so that's, that's an advantage, but one of the things that we heard is transportation and how we get people to different points and to, um, and to receive those services. It was interesting because I went back and looked at the housing study from, um, the, I think it was the late nineties, and that transportation issue was, um, something that also came up in that one too. Um, also, we found that a very high majority of, or a very good percentage of people would like to move to an owner occupied house or something larger in the county. So again, there is this opportunity for movement, um, in the market, and it continues to show support for the things that, that are out there. So, um, the, our next, yesterday, we started to present some of the draft, um, con, uh, ideas and strategies for how to move forward on these opportunities, um, and to begin to address those. And so the committee is currently, will be currently reviewing those over the next week or two, um, and then providing us with some feedback. So we're nearing the end. Charlie and I are happy to answer any questions. Hopefully I didn't go through that too quickly. We're happy to dive into any other detail. Just wanted to be respectful of your time, so. And I might hand this over to Charlie, but go ahead, sorry.
Supervisor Olson, and just because I have been so focused on housing for the last four years, you've not said one thing to me that I don't know and I think a lot of other people don't know. So I'm really looking forward to reading the draft, okay, where you're actually going to talk about the strategies and you're going to get down into exactly on some of these communities about the difference in, you know, uh, want to know more about serving under eighty percent, et cetera. Also, um, I have a question about one of the slides that we have, market assessment. So it's twenty to twenty eighteen home value rent and income changes? And is that the last, the last data available? Is that why you only went to twenty eighteen?
Yes, so that is the most recent data from the American Community Survey.
Okay, and then this is just something that I'd like to make note of here. There's, you have two slides before that on market assessment, twenty oh nine, no, twenty nineteen building permits without aims. Okay, so you run from twenty nineteen to the right to twenty oh nine. All of your other slides run from oldest to newest, and that's how people read.
Yeah, no.
It's concerning to me to look at that and, you know, and think, what am I looking at compared to everything else? So would you like to fix that before your final report?
I actually did already. I, I had updated the slides for today from last week because I caught that too and had already updated it, so we're good. I caught that too.
Back and forth, like what?
No, I was like, I don't read right to left.
Thank you. That's all I kind of had in the short period we have, yeah.
No problem. Thank you.
Be reading that final report.
Thank you very much. Sorry that we didn't get to you earlier. We have a lot of carryover items from our last agenda, so we've been kind of, yeah, appreciate, and we appreciate this and we do look forward to your final report. So thank you.
We look forward to coming back and presenting the final piece. Thank you.
Bye.
Why we can use it, so, oh, yeah, I'm. Okay, um, I'm going to take, I'm going to ask if we do a couple, might try a couple things.
Yeah.
Next, I'm going to, uh, item five from previous page. Uh, consideration request to request a waiver procedures for board and commission appointments to allow acceptance and consideration of Kim Stevens' application after the September thirtieth deadline. And now it's Shelley, I see what you mean. It is Stevens S apostrophe. Okay? I didn't understand what you were saying earlier. Um, and, and any discussion or?
Um, I guess I would just like to say that this was a different situation than the one we looked at last week. This was, um, with this understanding about notification, who was to notify her. And so, um, this seems like we're just writing that misunderstanding. No one had let her know about it. So, um, I believe it's my turn, I think. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept her application and, uh, for consideration for, uh, one of the asset appointments because we actually have two spaces open. What are you talking about? You just shook your head. I don't think we have two. Well, sure, we do. Hers.
You said we have two positions open?
Yeah, so that, her term is expiring. That becomes an open position. Okay? So we, we had posted on the website, we only have one asset opening, but we really, you do have another one because the term is all her, the term is expiring.
But she wasn't notified.
But she wasn't notified about it, so she didn't turn in a request to have be reconsidered. So we really do have two. There are four applicants now, correct, for two positions, not three for one. All of those people can be considered for her, for that second expiry one.
Yeah, Linda. I, I get what you're saying. I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, then.
I'll second.
Okay. We'll be seconded to, uh, um, approve the request for waiver procedures for Kim Stevens' application. Any other, any other, uh, discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hennessy?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Um, I'm going to ask, Mia, can we hold off on yours just a minute because we do have some time constraints on the, um, discussion and consideration of FY twenty-two budget guidelines because this is a document we need for our two o'clock department heads and elected officials, um, meeting. So, uh, Alyssa Wigman, I'd ask if you want to discuss with us?
I'm just going to update the session, guys.
Okay, yeah, we're getting it.
I have my own laptop and I have Microsoft Office, so I forgot this one. So. All right, so every year, um, there are some budget guidelines that go out with the budgets, um, and, and so I drafted a copy, sent it. Laura has some edits, so I need the board to discuss what they want in the finalized document, um, so that I can get that to Lisa Markley, um, so that it can go out for the two o'clock department heads and elected official meeting, so.
So what came out from, um, Alyssa, what came to us to take a look at is reads very closely to what we've seen. I've seen every year I've been on the board and some years before on the board, like before I was on the board and just went to the budget, uh, discussions, uh, but it does reference in the first paragraph here about we've, we've got, you know, some constraints. It's called a recession here. I didn't look up. Yes, we are technically in a recession, but, so when I took a look at this is that I felt that it needed to be stronger and we needed to provide specific guidelines to people about what the budget should look like. And so what my revision is, is just talks about the fact that we've got some very, uh, our taxpayers have some very significant, uh, likely hardship going in, and I don't know that we can expect the revenues to flow in quite as well or completely, which is why I suggested a one and three quarters percent reduction over what everyone ended up with for last year. So what we published last year and approved last year, I took that, and it was, you know, many departments went up five, six percent, okay, from the year before. And I just said, hey, back that off by one point seven five percent for your basic, the operating, not the salaries, not CIP. The new board will decide, see at which projects actually we could, the county can afford or not, okay? But when it comes to just really truly taking a look at what the costs are versus what the expectations might be when revenue comes in. So I took a look, as I noted in my, in my revision, they took a look at what Treasurer , um, Rasmussen said, we had as far as quote unquote, the link with taxes, and I did a percentage calculation there to take a look at about what that would mean if nobody, if everybody or the same people didn't pay their percentage of taxes, and so there, that money didn't come in. It ended up being late or didn't come in for a whole year. So those are my suggestions. They are based upon the pandemic, based upon the derecho, based upon, we already have seen in the papers that we received information from emergency management forwarding it to us about, uh, the expectation of drought conditions coming up. So, and then the other change is, is, you know, it always says, and don't submit any, any additional employees unless, and it's always got that language in it, and I just made it stronger saying, don't submit anybody, period. I mean, we, we gave those out. Anyway, but I will be here to do the budget, so this is my last input on it, and this is why I did it, is we've got people out there who are hurting, okay? I don't know that we can expect the income flow, the revenue flow to come through. So that just offered an alternative.
I, uh, left a message for our treasurer yesterday because I realized that when I looked at this, that the last we had heard from him was in October. So I, and he sent me an email that I received this morning, and he said that what they had, he had seen, and he updated the figures. I sent it to both of you.
Yep.
He said, uh, it, what he's seeing is on target for a normal year thus far. I don't disagree that we don't know what's going to come, but we don't know what's going to come. I think that the one point seven five percent, I, first, across-the-board cuts to me can undo harm smaller, um, units that have tighter budgets sometimes. So I, I'm not a fan of across-the-board cuts. I think we will have to do some, some cutting back. Um, I think that we do have people who are hurting. Um, it is a recession and a derate show. We don't know how long the pandemic is going to last, but I, I think trying to say, based on, you know, the information you have, and you wrote this, the one and three quarters percent, um, for one thing, all departments don't have the same revenue sources, and they're not all going to be as dependent upon property taxes. You've got secondary roads, which brings in a whole lot of real use tax money. You've got some other places, conservation brings in some other monies. I, I think we'll have to get more specific than this. The general message I think is good, but to go with the one point seven five percent across-the-board operating expense cut right now, I, I think we'll just be redoing that all in a few months when we get some more information from Assistant Audit Dramatically. So I would say, I have no problem with close to projections is probably better than pretty well in the first paragraph. Uh, I can go with that. I can go with, uh, under the first bullet, under personnel, but likely, taking out the likely because it still says clearly demonstrated and urgent, I think is good. Positive sense is good. I think all your narrative wording, I think all the word smithing is good through there, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not thinking we should go to one point seven five percent as budget direction right now.
Yeah, um, I would say the journalism and you definitely comes out because I liked your word smithing that you did in there as well. Um, my only question was with that one point seven five, um, when I was thinking about it, I mean, that's part of when the departments come to us. And, you know, last year, we really went through and, I know previous years because it was my first budget going through, I think the departments kind of came ahead and kind of got the thumbs up or thumbs down, you know, kind of right away or said it come back. And we took a little different approach of saying, gosh, we want to hear what everybody's requesting and then kind of figure out, you know, from, from, from there or whatever is what we, what we kind of.
And that's pretty much how it goes. So as I said, every year, the same budget memo comes out and then everybody just throws what they want. And so the process works anyway. I was going for a message, so, you know, not married to the one point seven five percent, not married to anything, um, uh, say more to get everybody's attention, and everybody does know that. Some of your own families and relatives may be struggling there and stuff. So, yeah, so I, I brought something forward just for a reminder and a discussion when everybody goes in this time, really understand that when it comes up here, you guys are going to really have to get in there and take a look. So anything that doesn't come to the table, they can cut. I mean, the whole, all the years I covered the board and then sitting on the board, I want to say that almost everybody is just absolutely responsible. They do it very different ways, and occasionally something comes through and then there has to be real discussion on it or whatever, but it's not like the county itself, employees are big, are big spenders without some kind of thought. Okay? So, yeah, so if you want to do that, that's, that's good. I just.
We don't have too much time, so rather than go through it word by word, could you simply just say, take out the specific one point seven five percent reduction in operating expenses and go with some of, and go with.
Go with the other, the other changes.
Otherwise.
Sounds good.
So all of Laura's, so I've got all of Laura's edits, except I would like to, the one that says current, she changed it to plans, it's contribution rates, not.
Oh, contribution. You didn't add contribution. I just got.
Yeah, because I said before, I said before, insurance contribution rates to be determined, the current rates are, but I can add contributions in front of rates.
Sorry.
I just, I'll just add contribution.
That's good.
That makes sense.
And so then everything else, I'll, I'll, under personnel, I'll make those changes. Um, at the top, I'll make the close to predictions change. And then I'll just eliminate her for FY22. I won't include that paragraph.
Just get rid of that. Okay, I think she had that in two little pieces.
I do, because down under the specific.
Down under operating.
Yeah, on the operating discussion.
Do you want to take that out there too?
Second bullet, not operating.
Okay. But I'll leave like, attempt to offset any increase.
Yeah, because that's your language anyway.
Yeah, do your language, which would be that three quarters.
All right, I think I got it.
Do you need a motion or can we just do direction?
It's a consideration. So just motion to.
Okay. I'll change.
I'll make the motion for Alyssa to address the budget guidelines with the edits as discussed at the board table.
I second. For the discussion, if not, Headman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
I'll go get this done.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Alyssa. Now, Amelia, should we go back and pick up your other item?
Yeah.
Sorry, we're going to have all this in one place.
Our intern Emily is going to present this. And she's having trouble sharing her screen, so we have the PowerPoint she made in the shared drive for the VOS presentation for today. But we're going to do it in a grid version. Interesting.
Thank you.
It's that one, yes. And if you could skip to, there's this area for further consideration. Next one after that, yeah, there. So just really brief, again, I'm going to turn this over to Emily, our intern. But we did a survey of Iowa Center and Shipley and got the community's concerns, what they liked. We usually would have a community meeting after that. But with COVID, we had to send out a second survey to get locational information on some of the issues they were having. It got mixed results, but we wanted to present what we had moving forward. And Emily did a nice job summarizing what we've already done in the memo. So I think today's presentation is just going to be what we think should happen for action moving forward. So I'll turn it over to Emily. Are you there?
Hi, good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, good morning.
Okay. Super. All right. So, yeah, so we'll start with the areas for further action by the Board of Supervisors. And then for each of these areas, there's recommendations for what action to take at the end. So we'll move to the first slide, broadband and internet connectivity. So residents of both communities indicated a need for broadband and connectivity in the area. Assessing broadband connectivity needs in Story County is considered a high priority action item for the Board of Supervisors strategic plan. And then planning and development staff also learned that Huxley Communications had, is in the process of expanding fiber optic service to the Shipley area and is currently in its construction phase. So we'll move to the next slide. Residents of the Shipley community indicated in the follow-up survey that we had sent out a concern regarding a railway. The following is an image of where the railway intersects on 260th Street in Shipley. And so the concerns that were brought up by the community included site visibility, which you could see in the image. And then in addition, there was a desire for an established quiet zone, which is in regard to the required train horn rule. If we move to the next slide, there are two areas where the railways and streets intersect. And so the one that we just talked about, the one on 260th Street, has a lighted signage and contains an average daily transit of 100 automobiles. The second one is on 595th Street. And this intersection contains an unlighted signage and has an average daily transit of 70 automobiles. Neither of the crossings have gates. And the railway itself sees about 12 trains per day, about six during the daytime and six at night. Moving to the next slide, planning and development staff had identified the Iowa Highway Railroad Crossing Safety Program as a funding opportunity to increase transportation safety in this area. Railroad companies and public roadway jurisdictions can apply for this improvement funding. And applications to the program are due July 1st to be considered on the next funding cycle. Moving to the next slide. The next area for further action is in regard to community concerns regarding Jake breaking in Iowa Center. Members indicated interest in establishing a no-Jake-breaking zone within the area. Planning and development staff communicated this interest to the county engineer, who indicated that the Story County Board of Supervisors would need to pass an ordinance in order to require it. The county engineer may plan to bring forward a no-Jake-breaking ordinance proposal to the Board of Supervisors. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Commissioner Menz commented that it is it is important to remember that Jake breaks are sometimes necessary for truck drivers and safety. Moving to the next slide. Residents of Iowa Center communicated interest in the following community improvements. The first being an increase in community and/or recreational facilities. Second, interest in having more businesses in Maxwell and/or Iowa Center. The third being interest in additional funds for cemetery upkeep. And then the last being an interest in installing welcome signs. And these, Amelia will go into further depth during the recommendations portion of this presentation. And then going into the next slide. Community members had also indicated interest in having the road shoulders widened on S-27. And so the next slide. These are the planning and zoning recommendations, and I'll just hand that over to Amelia.
Emily? So the Planning and Zoning Commission heard the results and made several recommendations. Some are just things to keep in mind as we're going through capital improvements projects and strategic planning projects. A lot of them are actually like that. So for instance, continue to consider the unincorporated villages when we're doing this broadband survey. Since it was such an issue that residents experience. And then another one like that would be if the county engineer brings forward the Jake break ordinance. You know, part of the public comments considered could include the survey. If, you know, distant capital improvements program, the widening of S-27 is considered, you know, again, consider that Iowa Center residents did identify that as an issue. And then the other two items were giving staff direction to reach out to the railroad about those crossings and the program with the Iowa DOT to see if they're interested. And we would, of course, come back to the board if there's any match or contribution or additional work on a back grant program required for additional action to give us the direction. But we just want a direction to reach out to the railroad as a first step and see what their interest was. And then the other item was on Iowa Center community's concerns. This item, I guess I want it to narrow. There was a lot of different concerns about businesses and that kind of thing. And really what staff wants direction on is reaching out on two issues, the signs, welcome signs, and then the cemetery funds. And so what, I reached out to Lisa Markley yesterday, and I appreciate Supervisor Merkin reached out to me because there's, there's public cemeteries and there's private cemeteries. And, yes, and I, yes. And so I think, but what we, I figured out with the help of Lisa, and she was going to look into it further, is that the township trustees can still levy for private. Unowned, sorry. Unowned. And so we're going to look into that further. If, you know, something comes out of that, I'd like the direction to be able to reach out to the township trustees and say, hey, we had the survey, here's the results, here's what you could do if this is an issue. And similarly, the welcome signs, there was a previous funding program that doesn't exist anymore for township trustees to request funds. And that's how Fernald, for instance, got its bus stop. But that program, that funding program doesn't exist anymore. So we don't really have any other options to look into, but I wanted to bring it to your attention in case there's a direction you'd like us to go in and looking at other funding opportunities for a welcome sign.
When you said there was a program, was that through the Board of Supervisors or?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm just throwing at you guys. I wonder though, if that's where the fact that there is a representative for the Story County Board that we pay, if that person would not be able to be represented and if that gives a report to the Story County Economic Development Board? Or if this would be a separate program that would need to be restarted, kind of like Lee Anne's assistance program?
That's what it was.
Was it? Okay, super.
Thank you, Ann.
Who's ten pro assistance to township trustees?
Okay.
And we ran, the board ran it one year, and there were no takers. Fernald was outside of that program.
Okay. I'm missing God in the future. I just started coming up again. I know I, I was dealing with someone with Huxley, and Ethan was involved, and Craig Henry was still mayor. I mean, geez, nobody quite knows what to do with them, but obviously they're important to people's relatives.
So I think the cemetery issue, we might, you know, find some information on their levy with the help of Lisa Markley, which I appreciate we could reach out to the trustees after that information. But the other funding, I don't really think there is a program right now to get a welcome sign.
So on the railroad, so can you say reaching out to the railroad? Are you looking at reaching out to them to see if they would do signage on it or?
If they would apply for the grant.
So it's where a county road, a railroad road was across the county road. So I don't know if Darren is still on, but I would think that would be Darren's.
Yeah, and we routed it to Darren.
Okay.
I don't know if he's still on either.
Yes, several of them are issues that, I mean, he's trying to find a nexus with the county. What's, how's the county involved in that? And I would say that if Darren could, yeah, if you could follow up with Darren, and he's probably, it doesn't look like he's still on, follow up with him about the issues that seem to be anyway, roads related.
Yeah.
And if he says it's not his, he may have another idea.
Yeah.
There was a fire, fire district issue, I think. And one, there was one thing about fire protection, and that is township trustee issue. So that and the cemeteries, we could follow up with either the owners of the cemeteries or the trustees.
Okay, we can do that.
But other than that, I don't know where, you know, trustees have three or four different duties that are mandated by the code. I found the fourth one the other day. Couldn't wait, but I thought it was, yeah. But anyway, but, but they're pretty limited. I mean, they're not like a mini county. They have specific, very specific responsibilities. So I think, you know, looking at that. Are you looking for a specific motion?
I'm just, that you're giving staff direction to just do a little bit more research, reach out to Darren, reach out to the township trustees if there's, with the issues that came forward.
It says consideration, but I don't know that we need a specific motion direction.
Just direction.
You know, and that would be something I would think we'll do with Sandra too, to figure out where your workload is and whatever, I mean, you know, as far as the priorities and the reach out.
Rights, yeah.
Kind of been an ongoing, and these are some goals for the future.
Right.
Things, so.
Okay.
Yeah, well, at least you don't have to worry about how you fill your days right now. That was great job, Emily. Good job.
Thanks.
Thanks, Amelia. Thanks, Emily. Okay.
Thank you.
Department reports. Animal controls quarter report we have received. Anna, do you have anything additional you'd like to add?
I don't at this time. I didn't know if you wanted me to go over anything in the report and all.
A quick kind of question related upon the fact about the Ames Animal Shelter, about with them having to be closed for a couple of weeks due to the COVID exposure. So have we been able to provide them with any help or are they holding out on their own pretty well?
So the Ames Police Department and the Ames Police Community Officers are handling their animal control right now. I did talk to Ethan about what we could assist with, and he advised that we would probably have to have a, like a contract like we do with other cities before we were to go in there and provide the animal control services.
Okay, well, that's good to know. At least you had the conversation, which is good. And they will hopefully let us know if they need anything. All right, thank you. Thank you for being proactive on that.
No problem.
I don't, actually, that was my question. And I don't have any questions either. But thank you very much for the report. Thanks for coming in there.
Thank you.
I've got a kitty to go home with everybody right now, right? Anybody who's on the phone call right now gets a kitty.
Yeah, please come in and get some cats.
Yeah, I've got too many already, but thank you. Margaret, environmental health report, anything you'd like to particularly highlight to us, for us?
No, I'd just like to emphasize that we will be having a public hearing tomorrow evening. Please, come one, come all. I'd appreciate it. And the report is self-explanatory. Any questions on it?
Margaret?
Just a missing.
You have a question?
I do.
Okay, go.
Okay, Margaret, clear down at the end of your report under little Amy. And it talks about Conley Trucking, and it references this highly suspicious and working on the. Suspicious is that what their septic is not working right now? Is that what it is? Because you talk about.
Yeah, so there's physically just nowhere that that septic system could be located on their tiny lot as they have a well, and they're surrounded on both sides by roads. And then also right-of-way's where the septic system couldn't go and very deep ditches. So physically, it's just not possible to have laterals or any secondary system there. I assume they have a tank, but most probably not a holding tank or anything like that. We have nothing on file. So it's, you know, just to the, just to the eye, it's, it's very suspect.
Have they been cooperative so far and, or have you even responded or kind of reached out to them yet?
No responses whatsoever. I've sent two, I believe, two letters certified so that I knew that they got them, but no response. So I guess I'll next have to go knock on their door. I don't think that the owner and then also the owner of Conley is probably different than the owner of the property. So I'm not sure how that plays out. I guess I'll have to meet with Ethan on that.
Yeah, with this proximity close to water sources, I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's exactly, very good point. I'm sorry. It is located super, super close to Ada Hayden and the Skunk River. So any discharges would most probably be getting to water bodies.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yeah.
Great. Anya? I have no questions either. Thank you very much. Okay. See you tomorrow night.
Thank you.
So Lisa Markley?
She said she wants to move it to next.
Move it to next week?
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, then FY21 quarterly report we'll take to next week. And that will be one of our upcoming agenda items. Am I missing anything? You've been going back and forth. I think I've caught everything as we've moved it down. Do you see anything that we haven't?
No, I think.
Okay. Pardon? Thank you. So upcoming agenda items, I don't have anything I need to discuss there. We're getting ready for a 2 o'clock meeting, so I'm going to kind of hurry us up unless there's something we need to do. Okay. Item 20, public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on the agenda. We cannot take any action, do the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. So I will open public forum number two, do any members of the public have any brief comments?
So I will open public forum number two. Do any members of the public have any brief comments for us? So raise your hand, using the Zoom function, unmute yourself, star nine, whatever works. Hearing nobody, seeing nobody else, close to public forum number two. Raise on assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements for the supervisors. I don't think I have any that are urgent.
Oh, I have anything urgent as well.
Well, okay, so we have some non-urgent stuff, but we will not deal with it today. We'll catch it later. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Salute.
Second.
Allson. Aye.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We are adjourned.